For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mark. I didn't know that it was 9:00 AM. I was having such a good time. Okay, meeting's called to order. We have two minutes to approve. Let's start first with Monday's supervisory meeting of February 17th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I see, and I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. And I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the February 17th meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, next, we have our budget meeting, February 18th. Are there any comments on those minutes?
The only thought that I had was, over the weekend, just kind of looking at, perhaps we should have added a little additional detail to the discussion about the SOC trail. In retrospect, I don't see how you all think about it, but we didn't really talk much about, you know, where it would be funded from. We didn't talk about the loan. We didn't talk about...the minutes just don't record that. I know we talked about it in great length, but perhaps it's probably better left off for today's minutes.
I can be sure to include the funding information.
Well, so you wish to leave these minutes alone and documented in today's minutes?
Documented a little better in today's minutes, I think.
Sounds good. Okay, with that...
So I'd make a motion to approve these minutes written as is then.
There's a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Approve the minutes of the February 18th budget meeting. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Okay.
First on the agenda?
First, maybe we better approve the agenda.
Agenda, alright. Gene thinks we need to approve the agenda, and he's correct. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
You didn't have anything dropped off from the ambulance this morning, did you? Looks like they're going to, so, yeah, we'll wait for that then.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Alright. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. We'll take it. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Now, we have the SOC rail trail fundraising committee. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Thanks for having us. This is courthouse coffee. It's pretty good, but it's not all the way through yet to get me totally fired up, but we're getting close. I think we have good news, good news, and good news.
Well, that's good news.
Yeah.
Let's start with good news.
Well, I think you've seen that the trail bid numbers came in from the DOT last week. I'll let Jason kind of go through a little bit.
I think everybody knows the numbers, but just so we can all look at the same numbers. Nothing's changed.
I'm gonna leave a copy for Marty, too.
Sure.
So when we started fundraising, our original goal, because no one really knew where the number would come in, obviously, we had to wait. It's too bad that, you know, we haven't got everybody to turn in for the budget, but I guess it gives us a sense of deadline to get everything done anyway. But when we originally started this, we were hoping to privately fundraise $50,000. We've raised $100,000. We've had a couple of nice gifts come in in the last 20 days, and so needless to say, we're more than a little excited about that number. And we don't think that's the end of that number. The only major gift or grant that we still have that lays out there is UP. And being as how the baseball fundraiser already heard that they've gotten their grant, we're a little surprised we haven't heard either a yea or a nay on ours. But, and that request was for $50,000, right?
Yeah.
So we don't know yet where that's at. I mean, so our number could still get even much larger if something would happen there.
Was it 50, you say?
Correct. So we don't know where, you know, where that lies exactly, and we've tried to make contact, phone calls and emails, and we don't get a response, so we guess...
We have a feeling that we did get, since Carol's already found out, that we got some money for that other one. I think we've got enough to cover it, but...
Although they do tell you, they'll let you know what you're late, so, you know, we can get the call today saying maybe you give us $50,000, you can get the call and it's $25,000. So... Anyway, that one's still out there. That's the only large one that's out there. We have several private asks that are still out there. The more media we catch, the more money we get, so it seems to help us out a little bit there, so the radio station doesn't mind. It's just a little bit more. Then working the numbers backwards, the one variable on here that helps us, I think, is the engineering number. And last time when we did the million-dollar trail from Maple River to Lakeview, that number actually went down considerably from where they had forecasted. So JEO basically gives us worst-case scenario, it's gonna cost you $50,000 to engineer. Well, in visiting with George from JEO last year, as long as we have somebody certified, which Denny Lawler, who's our head of maintenance out there, Denny will, he is still certified, so Denny's gonna be able to help us take measurements as they're going through the process of pouring the concrete around the lake. So that $50,000 should lessen. The more time Denny can spend on it, and the less time JEO spends on it, the more that number comes down. So that's the only variable, you know, that really we see out there that could help us out even more. So at the end, you know, worst-case scenario, the county, being county conservation and supervisor, however you want to look at it, worst-case scenario, we see is $108,000 to $309,000. What do we think will happen? I think that 50 goes to 25. So I think you probably take 25 off that number, and that might be optimistic, but I do hope that our engineering number doesn't exceed 25,000. So then you take 25 off the 108, and that gives you whatever, you know, somewhere between 75 and, say, 90 is what we're hoping, anyway. So, you know, you guys want to be last hour, and just like you were, Dean, that was ahead of, prior to you being on the board, and Neil, I think it was in your gap, so, when we did that trail. So Dan babysat it, and he watched that number, and he watched a lot of things on it that saved us a lot of money, and I think your number ended up being like 65,000 on the big, on the big trail. So, you know, because that number moves all around, I guess what we're coming today to ask you guys for is a commitment of 75,000 from you folks, and then whatever the variance is above that, to the county conservation, so that we can cover that gap wherever that number ends up. I don't know how else to do it right, guys. Isn't that kind of what we're thinking?
Just, as far as that $50,000 engineer, I've heard it explained two ways. I've heard it explained as guaranteed not to exceed, and I've heard it explained as an estimate. Is there a...
No, yeah, it's an estimate, definitely.
So it's not a guarantee not to exceed?
JEO isn't gonna guarantee. And if you see their hours, you're right, you can see why. You don't want them out there anymore hours than you have to. No offense to George, but it's...
When he came up with that number, that's if they have to have somebody on site every day, he figured all working days, them being on site, so...
Okay.
They're only gonna be out there as much as DOT requires them to be out there. And they're thinking if, if everything holds true, and they get this contractor, which they do trail work, that's what they do, they won't have to be as much staking and stuff, you know, and that's all figured into this $50,000, is just stake everything, two sides, and all that kind of stuff, so they won't have to do as much of that, and...
Yeah, we're still gonna do the shoulder, and the county conservation guys are. So, I mean, that was a huge savings, and we think that'll go smooth. Probably the best news is, is who got the contract. The guy's out of Rockwell City, and he pours trails. He has a slip form made for pouring trails. This isn't a highway contractor. This is actually a trail company, if you will. And there's a few good things about that. One, he has very little travel time, so the guys will get here, they'll work, and they'll go home. And so that is part of the reason why his cost was lower than some of the other companies. But we've seen his work. We've talked to several county conservations where they've done trails. Everybody seems to be very happy with the way they work. So the only sub on there is the grinding of the trail, you know, the trail that's there now. And they'll grind it and then put it back in place, and then they'll roll it, and then they'll pour concrete over the top, but that's basically how the thing goes down. And then we'll shoulder it when it's done. And actually, I think it's a 30-day window, isn't it?
Yeah.
So it'll go fast once they start.
We hope.
Yeah, we hope, yeah.
One other question we had when we discussed this last week, and the numbers have changed. Nice, and the question had to do with your private contributions as opposed to cash in hand, and money coming in as far as the logistics of when that money would come in, and I think it was over a two- or three-year period. I see you've broken down the numbers, and I, so I got that. But when you talk about this gap that you want us to find, how much would that be because of pledges that aren't in yet?
Yep, good question. So if you look at the, and I made a couple of phone calls there on some of the larger ones. So the remaining would be $29,750. Of that, if you notice, one of the largest ones is Farner-Bachans, is $10,000, and they said they will pay that in this year, so in '15. So if you take 10 off the 29, that gets us down to 19. And I didn't call on some of the smaller ones, but we, obviously, we dealt personally with almost all of them, so we did deal with all of them. The only one that I would say that, well, I think you can take the remaining 19, split that in two. So now we're down to somewhere around 10,000 would not come in in 2015, but that would come in 2016. So, and some of that, if we made the calls, phone calls, could come in the first part of '16. So it really actually, most of it comes in, in the '15, '16 budget year, if that answers your question.
Would you say 10 grand? All but 10 grand would be in the bank by the time we need all this to happen?
Exactly.
Okay.
And I don't see any on here. You know, they're all solid.
Yeah, we couldn't figure that. We didn't know exactly when payments would be due to the construction company and that type of thing, and the inflow.
They pretty much gave us the idea that JEO, that they probably wouldn't start until mid-summer, which is kind of good and bad, but it's good for budget here, you know.
Rectification.
It's gonna be ready by the summer. He's pretty optimistic in working with these people. They'll, they come in, and they're, they're getting jobs done. They want to get in, they want to get out, but, so, he's sleeping 30 days, making lots of good letters.
Yeah, if weather's big, but...
Right.
We should have the nicest, we will have the nicest trail in western Iowa. And we think, you know, I'm not selling you guys on it because you already have seen the numbers. Our revenues will continue to go up simply because we'll have the nicest riding trail around two state parks. It's gonna help Lakeview out for camping, it's gonna go up. Our camping is gonna go up. I just wish we had more spots for campers out there, because on the big weekends, we're poor. So it's, it's gonna be a beautiful trail when it's done, that's for sure. And the cool part is with concrete, if we have a little trouble, we can, we can literally cut it out and replace the section. And if you have trouble, you can do that asphalt. You're in a lot of trouble. Once part of it starts going, usually a wall just starts going. So, and just with the history of the section they have up by Lakeview that's been in there the longest, they have very little trouble with our trail. Granted, a lot of that went on a rail bed, which is better yet, but because of the history and the age of ours, we don't anticipate a lot of trouble either. And of course, now we know we keep as many heavy vehicles off of it as possible.
I've ridden that one. Now, the one at Twin Lakes, I walked most of that. When was that done? Do you know the year on that? That's a nice cement trail, too.
Going way back, two, two and a half years ago, JEO had presented us with those three options, which would be, you know, the good veteran best way to do it, and we were all pretty well convinced, do it right now, and it'll, we'll get another 30 years out of this, and all of us will be gone.
Especially, Mark, well, seriously, that number's probably realistic, because you're putting asphalt below it, so you, I mean...
Right.
There's places that grind the asphalt and, and use that as their trail. Now, if you're doing just a walking trail and not so much bike trail, you can probably get away with that. This has given us an incredible base.
I forget all those engineering terms that were bounced off of us, but we're going back underneath and addressing the root of the cracking and so on to eliminate that, and we're gonna have a much better bed that this should be the last time we do this.
Yeah, yeah, I think looking at Dave, if everyone in here is working, might have a little something going, but otherwise, the rest is... But they, and the guys are removing the trees that are close, because some of the trails, I know Glidden, when they poured their asphalt trail over there initially, I don't overlook that. They had rises in that trail of two to three feet, and it was literally willows growing up underneath the asphalt and pushing up on it, literally pushing it up that far. And so, you know, part of the key to success is to keep the growth down around the trail, so those roots don't get anything pushed up. They're not gonna push up the concrete, but reality is they're doing damage, and so we're doing that right now. We're removing some of the close-in trees, and there's some other issues with trees that, you know, just environmental issues that they want you to watch out for because it's federal, because there isn't a bat hanging in it or something like that. And so, making sure that those are...
Spotted out. If I'm looking at this correctly, worst-case scenario, once the county contributes $75,000 hard, and then we're gonna loan Conservation the balance of that, the balance being 33, and then we haven't collected $10,000 from the private, worst-case scenario, we're looking for a short-term loan of $43,000. Is that how you're looking at it?
I would define that as worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario. That's before any more grants come in, any more private contributions come in, if, if we reduce any engineering costs, anything like that. But, you know, for our, you know, budgeting perspective, I think we need to, you know, concern ourselves with a worst-case scenario.
Yeah, because a lot of the, a lot of the donations, at least the two-year ones, the first payment was made in '14, so there should be another payment made in '15.
Right.
Some of the three-year ones, obviously, we got.
How, how comfortable are you with the term of the loan? We obviously want it shorter than longer. You probably want it longer than shorter.
Well, we don't have anything major coming up, as far as, there's another fundraising trail, bridges out there. If they run, it doesn't like all, they're gonna run into major issues slurring those bridges, so we don't really, I mean, Jason can speak for the board. I don't think we have anything major out there that scares us for crises. If something happens to the conservation center, we have two geothermal pumps go out, we've always got, we've got the retained funds for that, so, I mean, the likelihood of us having something dramatic going on is pretty...
But in your capital funds, you've got about $180,000, and not all of that is going to the trail, of course. Some of that is set aside for some of your other things like you've mentioned.
Yeah, the Teegis House.
Right, and you got a few years on the Teegis property, that acreage there, yeah.
So is one year enough?
I think so.
If that's the number, it's not, you know, I think we would have to do another grant to pay it back.
And if a grant should come in, say Union Pacific, what, where does that money go to? Have you thought about that?
Where would we prefer it go to? Off of our loan. I mean, if you look at the end of the day, for the size of the, all the scope of this whole thing, we're talking about end to end, two and a half, $3 million. At this point, the county hired with $65,000 into its county tax bill. I don't think another 75 is a bad thing. And then if, if we get so lucky that he calls and says there's $10,000 or $15,000, it'd be nice if it came off the line and off the loan. I'd jump up and down if we got that phone call, but I actually don't think we're gonna get that phone call.
Let me explain a little bit of our logic. We had Wednesday, you know, about that, if I may. Right or wrong, this was the logic behind it. We've, we believed that, there was some belief that 50,000 should be enough for this, and through discussions, the number landed closer to 75. Once that discussion came, it was kind of with the understanding that any, any grant money, and we'll use the term grant here, would, would come off of that, but any additional private, we didn't want to discourage any additional people that are out there. They're gonna read the paper, hear the radio, watch cat TV, and say, "Well, now they don't need me." We didn't want to discourage that. We still want those activities to continue well into when it's time to start paying the bills. And there might be somebody who bequests something, or, you know, Tom just has no, you know, stop in him. And so we wanted to have that come off of the loan. That was the logic behind that. We just, we don't want to discourage that. And that being said, you know, we felt that, you know, we would still extend, again, all along, we thought there was probably gonna be some discussion about a loan, which I don't think anybody, you know, had any problem with that on Wednesday either, and I think that continues again today. So that was the logic behind it, guys, right or wrong. You know, it, it wasn't with, without a great deal of, of dialogue and discussion, and at the end, some measure of congruence.
Yeah, if we had applications out there for six grants, we'd probably want an arm wrestle if we could.
Right.
But if we've only got one shot at a grant, and, and don't think, it's not, that is not a good grant. Who knows? We could get the call. So we'll let you guys decide that. And I do appreciate the private funding still going towards our burden, because we do know we're gonna get some more private funds. They might be, you know, the one that surprised us, that $12,000 gift, we were hoping to put $2,000 or $3,000 in, and so the number's bigger. People do believe in this trail. I believe in it. I haven't ridden it ever, so, maybe in a ballpark. But, so, I mean, there's a lot of support for this trail, especially businesses. It just amazed me how easy it was to raise the funds. I mean, you go from a $50,000 goal to 100, there's some serious support out there for it. And I think everybody realizes, we don't have a ton of tourism around here, so, you know, this is our one tourist attraction, that is truly tourism. I, you know, you guys, I'll let, we'll put in the pitch that, yeah, we'd love to see if the grant comes in to go, you know, off of our loan, and you guys just firm, you know, the commitment of a firm $75,000. That's the motion I'd like to see.
Yeah, I think we're still pretty well there. I think so. One question that we did have is, Jason, when were they thinking they would actually begin construction on this thing? We're not gonna have to worry about a fiscal year 15 issue, are we?
No, we're probably, they've got a couple of pulled-over projects from last year, so...
Imagine that.
I mean, we haven't, we don't have an exact date, because the way it works right now, DOT is still reviewing the bids. They haven't actually awarded...
That was my next question, so...
That should be this week. And then the conservation, the March 2nd meeting should be able to take action. We should get, JEO thought we should get some kind of DOT paperwork this week, hopefully, with the actual award for low bid. And then, because they can't have any conversations with the contractor, so DOT actually awards low bid, but...
Imagine that. We would have liked to have awarded it before we came to the meeting, but you also have a budget to get set. So, and they're a solid company, everything. There's no reason why they shouldn't paw through the cracks or something. Their number's gonna be accepted.
But it does have to be started by September 1st. That was part of the bid, and it has to be done.
So before September 1st start date, for sure?
Yes.
Okay.
The wait start date, 30 working days.
But no one's gonna be...
He's thinking July, July-ish time, probably gonna start. He's got two projects for sure. He knows that, that we'll hold over from last year, and he's gotta do it on first. So, you know, we shouldn't run in anything happening before...
Thirty days?
Thirty working days.
Thirty working days.
Let's just hope we have an on-the-rainfall that day. No one got more phone calls than the four guys sitting at that table.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Still good.
You got something?
There's an empty seat at this table.
Yeah, guilty party.
The guy who really got the phone calls, I think, is gone. I think Dan got a lot of phone, phone calls.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, I think so.
Congratulations, Dean. You're in his chair.
Yeah, I hope, I hope we got good weather.
Alright, I know, I think we had a pretty good discussion on this on Monday, and a few things that we didn't document that were kind of floating in the air is, I don't think we documented where the money was coming from, which I think we discussed, local option sales tax. We didn't document in the minutes where a grant would pay off our contribution, and any of their private contributions would go to the loan. We didn't determine the term of loan or the interest rate. So those are, like, five things that we haven't documented yet, that we shouldn't think about before we make a motion.
Well, I think we definitely need to take it on local option sales tax. And I agree with the definition of, take, if any grant comes off our contribution, and any of their private donations comes off their loan.
Okay. I think we agreed on that Wednesday. We just didn't document in our minutes.
If, I didn't realize that the, the request was for 50,000 from UP. I would make a caveat to that, that if it, if it does come in at $50,000, I think 25 should go to us and 25. Balance or whatever should go to the loan. Wife loan out, get us down to 50,000 or less, if it's 50,000.
Well, our loan part is only gonna be 30-some thousand.
Yeah. So I, if it comes in at that $50,000 mark, I'd like to see the loan go away. I don't want to confuse things, anyway, but I don't think we need to take it all and still have that loan sitting out there.
Okay. I differ on that, but just a small difference. You know, I, I think we should just leave it cut and dry. Grant off our contribution...
It's easily that way, but...
And contributions off theirs. I want to keep an incentive for their fundraising, which is going very well.
Sure.
That, that's part of it.
I tend to agree with Neil for that reason, that fundraising. I think if we, if they are not fortunate that they get that much, maybe we can have another conversation after that.
And I think just giving this 75 as the number we're talking about, as us, our grant, is treating pretty kind a certain slice of bicycle riders and trail people, which is a fall, you know, just certain part of our community, you know, that is a good part, but that's the way taxes are. Not every tax helps everybody. What do you think of that, Mark? What you were saying?
What Dean's suggestion was? Well, I, yeah, it's, I thought all along, I thought all along that our number would end up being at $75,000. I don't know what made me think that. It's just, that's what I thought the number would be. I understand his logic to it, but when we had the discussion here on Wednesday, it was fairly congruent that that's the way it would be, that the grant would come off of the county contribution, whereas any private fundraising would come off of their contribution. I thought it was pretty well a consensus of it.
If UP did call today and, and give 75, it would seem like a shame that the county would put in just 25, and we would have to, oh...
Yeah.
I mean, sure make one other person who's not in this room, who's in a warmer climate right now till tomorrow, it would make him happy to see that. He's the top one, he's done a ton of work.
He does, he has.
Just hypothetically, if that happened, it's obviously a positive news for both of us, so...
Okay. I think we're getting close to making a motion, whatever it is. Is there any other questions or comments from the board or the committee?
Would you say that, I was, the most loan would be is 43, something like that?
Yes, 43, 309, if you want to use today's numbers as a worst-case scenario, would be 43, 309.
And that number is a little bit larger than what we thought about on Wednesday.
Right.
Terms of the loan and the rate?
I would suggest not to exceed 18 months from the actual contribution date. And the reason why I say 18 months is that allows us to get into a next fiscal year if necessary, without extending it out a full two years. Thoughts?
I think as long as we can get into the next fiscal year.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and, gentlemen, I think we've got to apply a semblance of an interest rate to this. We've done something similar with Mount Carmel, and, and they're, they're paying, I believe, 1% would be my suggestion.
Is that what it was?
I think it's, I think it's like 3%.
Three, is it? This is a little different.
Yes, it is.
This is, this is not a capital fund, in, in the likes that this, that's actually an enterprise, certainly not...
That's going on for more than 18 years as well.
Correct. It's not a profitable one, and the term of it, I, my suggestion would be 1%.
Just to test them.
Mm-hmm.
Virginia, comment?
I have a question. You said it's gonna come on the local option. Is that out of the 50% of rural area, or of the other part of the...
Oh, it'd be out of the other part.
Oh, it'd be out of the other part. The remaining, yeah. Fifty percent, that automatically goes to rural.
That automatically goes to rural.
And, and there's about a million dollars in the reserves that did not go in there. We were anticipating taking it out of that, Virginia. Okay, is that correct?
That automatically goes to that.
Is that what the board was thinking, too?
Yep.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your question.
Okay. Well, I'd make a motion to what we discussed. What is the, that we would...
All right, contribute seventy-five.
Contribute seventy-five thousand dollars, at the balance of, are we going to make it a firm number at forty-three?
I think we can. Let's say not to exceed forty-three?
Not to exceed forty-three thousand dollars.
Forty-three, three oh nine.
Granted as a loan at one percent for eighteen months, and that any grant money that comes in would go off of the county's contribution, and that any donations come in would go off of the loan. Did I cover everything?
Please, sir. At, at a rate of one percent.
At a rate of one percent.
And to be taken from the local option sales tax reserve.
Okay, I did, yep.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to the motion? Second. Okay, we have a motion to grant seventy-five thousand to the Trail Committee and loan, and amount not to exceed forty-three thousand, three hundred, at the rate of one percent, not to exceed eighteen months, and that this money would come out of the local option sales tax. Any discussion on that motion?
I got two different amounts for the amount to exceed.
You made the motion, what was your, on the, on the forty-three, three, or forty-three?
That was forty-three. Forty-three, three oh nine.
Is that okay with the motion and the second, forty-three, three oh nine? Is that correct? Okay. Any other questions? Any discussion to the motion there? My final discussion is just to thank everybody that took their own role in this thing. I mean, goodness sakes, Rome wasn't built in a day, and this proves that neither was a trail. But, I mean, all of you guys, and Tom's not here to hear me, but he's going to hear from me later. But, that's a, that's a great deal of work. I think we had a little bit of good fortune fall our way, but it's time that that happens. But, you know, the only alternative to not making this happen is to turn that thing into a walking trail. And that thing was never intended to be solely a walking trail, never was. And that Swan Lake State Park is still kind of, forgive me, other amenities in the county, but it's still the jewel of Carroll County. And that trail is probably pretty darn good campgrounds out there, pretty darn good shower facilities, pretty darn nice little lake out there, but I, I would say that the trail around there, it anchored the twenty-six mile trail that we now have now, so I, I think this is certainly a worthwhile investment for all parties concerned. And I thank you, gentlemen, for the work in which you do, and continue to do today and hereafter. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote then. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
Jason, we may need a little help. I know you and Jason work together, you know, back pulling the dirt around the trail. I'm not sure we have all the equipment we need, but we may have a pile of power every once in a while, or a little bit of stuff, or some back. We'll trade, we got a big pile of black dirt out there, we'll give some.
And you talked about breaking.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You can break, break.
For engineering.
For engineering purposes.
Corn trees.
Beans. Talking slump test, or what are we doing here?
Well, they called it breaking, I don't know, it's foreign to me, but...
But, yeah, there'd probably be more than just the bean breaking. They'd probably have to do slumps.
They'd do slumps.
Who's going to do your inspection for you?
JEO.
JEO. But they don't have a bean breaker, so they'd check the... They'd certainly use ours, or...
Again, that's not, that just narrows them down.
I find that perfectly. I would have thought they would have had one.
I think so, yeah. They'd use oppressive cylinders.
But that helps us out. You know, if you can perform part of that, then that's less the, they're, they're going to bill us for it, obviously.
Yeah. That, that's going to be part of that fifty thousand.
That's what we saw, you know, the engineering number coming down. Anything you can do to help us will help us out in the back, so, thank you. I had a chance. We'll trade your dirt.
Are you going to have dirt left over there, do you think, or not?
Most likely.
You'll find out.
That looks like some pretty good darned black dirt. If you had some leftover, it'd be very sellable.
And Jason's already had calls. Several people want to buy dirt, so when we get all done, you know, we'll...
Absolutely.
We won't know until we get into it, until they actually grind it, like, you know, once they grind it.
Yeah.
We'll see how far it actually sticks out of the ground.
Yeah, I think that'd be very sellable dirt, soil, when it's left over.
The crust, so, you know, we have to get that down.
Right. Good, you have that.
We're probably going to gain some order.
Yeah.
Getting that, because it's about fifty percent of the...
It's just kind of nice that that swamp project kind of complements the trail project, manufacture the soil to put around the trail. Okay, very good.
Raise a eyebrow or two, though, when you start cutting a tree down in a park, you know, they, they, everybody's wondering what was going on over there when we built that white line. And it is, that's going to help the lake out considerably, just for nutrient load, you know, just takes a, a wetland deal. So, that was grand, like, a little complicated at the end, too, so, it works out.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks again, you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's follow the agenda, and Secondary Roads. Good morning, Dave.
Morning, David.
Morning, Dave.
All right, you start wherever you want, trailer quotes, maybe, limestone, whichever. I got limestone on top.
Go for it. Very good.
I think we've got enough for everyone, and maybe even some extras here.
Okay, we're talking about six thousand ton, I believe?
Six thousand tons. I just showed the unit price. I don't know if anybody heard that. Here's the individual quotes, if you want to see those. They're sorted by the lowest quote, first, of the nominee construction, Buckman Hobbie, at the lowest quote of fifteen oh five. They range out up from there. That is a really good course. I think it's, this is good timing for some people this time of year, and not, not quite as good as for other people. We tried a couple of local trucking firms that have hung together there, and I think they were actually busy this time of year, the success we had.
Was there any, was there any concern about what the source of the grant is for these bids?
We asked them to either provide it from Martin Marietta, or from Stratford, or up to Eclair. Both of them are one-inch limestone, same gradation, could call this story. I think it's coming from Martin Marietta, and Martin Marietta is...
Okay, so, I, I didn't see that on the bid, but that's part of it.
Yeah, I, it was really informative. I just called them and told them, write the stuff off to them.
So, you think dirt, phenomenon from Martin Marietta?
Yes, I do.
Where's that located at?
That's in Fort Dodge.
Fort Dodge, that's Fort Dodge one, okay.
There's the actual, it's there.
Everything else being equal, timing, delivery, methods, I mean, you had that all in the spec, so...
All the spec, yeah.
One inch?
One inch, yeah. That's, with defiance, it's the one inch is the top size of it. We're pushing at the pile, we're deflecting. It seemed to work pretty good the last time Dale did it, it just, you know, had going for it, it just came in, it worked out really well.
Fairly competitive bidding there.
Fairly, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say so. You had three of them, all within a gnat.
Tail.
Hair. All right. I think it's appropriate this time to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approved a little bit of the nominee construction for fifteen oh five, or one-inch limestone, delivered into Carroll.
Carroll.
Six thousand ton.
Six thousand ton.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve... Do you have the amount there, at fifteen oh five per ton?
Fifty, I said fifteen.
Okay, sorry. The nominee construction to deliver six thousand ton of one-inch limestone at the rate of fifteen dollars and five cents per ton. Is there any more discussion on that? I'll second it. Eric, did you have a second?
I didn't.
I'll second it. Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
It's about six dollars, twenty-five cents, and limestone, so, we're ready to do it.
Okay. Hearing note, further discussion, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same as aye. Yeah, I just have it. Motion carried. Trailers.
Trailers.
For sale. Get going, Dave, get going, Dave.
Were you sharp this morning, man? Say some more, but I didn't have that problem.
Been up since three-thirty, I should be ready to go by now.
Well, you got me beat.
Upside down here. Say one thing, it was a good thing that you had me get that second quote, because they wound up low.
Really?
Yes.
That kind of surprises me, but...
Well, it surprises me, too, and talking to the, to the guy, I'm, I'm not sure if the last time they, they didn't take the FET off. We actually had a, another vendor that was bidding, maybe they had the profit on. But, yeah, here, here they were as much low as, as they were high before.
Oh, my.
They were a little more than price.
Five thousand dollar a day here.
Yeah.
Savings.
That's, if, if, if we do two, I asked, I asked Brady, when I, when I called him back, if, if he had any price break for two, because we were talking two, one now and one later. He said he'd knock a thousand dollars off. Tesco won't knock anything off until you get to three, and then they knock two percent off. So, their number's pretty well it. I, I think they're it, other than the tongue on their trailer, they've got like a five hundred dollar option. They've, they've just given this kind of the bare minimum script downtime here. Here's the quote for four ninety-nine oh six, I think. And I think we'd rather have a tongue that's configured round like this. When, when they come in and dump in a pile, or they're hauling down the road and dumping with a pup, this would shed the rocks off of it that would come off the tail of the truck.
Makes sense.
And otherwise, they'd land...
The one that they did is square, you see in here?
Yeah, we did, we, this, this is the one that they did, and we definitely don't want that, because we continue to have windshield claims.
Oh, okay. That rock stays on there until you head down the road.
And I'm, I'm not saying this, because what, what we're dealing with now, with the...
Do they ever hang up in the bunnies here, then?
Doesn't seem to get backed up hard. Here's, I'll just show you some pictures. Here's one of our Brady's that's, it's in the shop right now.
It's got a twist, it's sort of sheds.
Yeah, so that, so that, that sheds, if you look right here, where it dumps, and they put something over the, over the pinwheel hitch there, so it doesn't collect rocks and debris and fall off. Went up to one of our local contractors, lives, for Dean lives, this, these are some, his Tescos, and their tongue. And I, I think I like the way the tongue is configured better on the Brady, and the construction of it, than I do the Tesco. But in talking to one of our newer employees who has pulled Tescos, and in talking to the owner of these, they don't have a problem.
Now, Tescos, did you call those cornhuskers, too?
That's what we call them, is cornhuskers, but it's Truck Equipment Service Company, or that's, those, those are the guys that deal with it. The Brady is a thousand pounds lighter than the, the Tesco. And if, and if I was in business, and if I was running from scale to scale, on White Rock, for instance, I could probably justify that thousand pounds, because that's a half a ton that you'd be hauling. But our, ours is pretty arbitrary with what we're hauling, you know, and we usually put a couple buckets on the back, about what you put on there. And, you know, we're, we'd have a tough time rationalizing the justification, other than unpaid haul.
And if you're hauling twenty-four, seven, or around the clock, too, that, some of these trucks never park, you know, that'd make a difference as well.
And the triple axle, doing the, doing the bridge thing, and what our trucks weigh, and what we got, it appears that the triple axle is, is not conducive, because we can't get enough weight on the pup to require the triple axle anyway. It looks to me like it's, it would be hard to get much more than thirty-five thousand on the pup. The triple axle would allow us to go to forty-one.
Dave, as opposed to buying that more expensive tongue, would it be kosher just to weld a, a angle on top?
I think in looking at that tongue, you know, as wide as that is, they, we've got one, an old, old one in the shop, where they put a plate on it, they flipped it over, but it just had all sorts of rocks on it.
All right.
So, yeah, I, I, I think that round one would probably be worth it, just to make windshield claims a little.
All right.
We've had more windshield claims this year than I can remember. People, they seem to identify, and they come, insurance companies, some of them, some of them, they don't, but it gets, gets to be hard to prove.
I thought we were immune on those. Okay.
We don't seem to be.
So, they do pay some now and then, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
Okay, very good.
We need to do everything we can to make sure that we don't have rocks laying on our, our load, and they're coming off the top of our load, and laying on our foundation.
Where's that picture of that round one?
It's in there.
There it is.
So, how much more is the round tongue?
Five hundred bucks.
Five hundred bucks, yeah.
Four hundred and ninety-six.
Yeah.
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars.
And that's just, and that's just on the cornhusker, right?
Just on the cornhusker. So, yeah, so the cornhuskers would be five hundred dollars more. It hauls a half a ton less, or it weighs, weighs a thousand pounds more.
But you did say last week that it's heavier built. Think it's heavier built than the Brady, as the construction is heavier, if I remember saying that.
I, I recall that, too. You just mentioned that, it seemed like it'd be...
I asked, I asked Brady about that, because it's, it is heavier. And he said probably a lot of that is because they have it extruded in a box. Now, I don't know what extruded in a box is versus just a, there's, there's a picture of the underside of Brady.
Wouldn't that be smooth versus grooved? Just adds a little more strength every time you put a bend in it?
Yeah, that I don't know. All I know is, you know...
I don't know if extruded and corrugated correlate, Mark. I'm not sure about that. I'm, I'm...
Extruded would be one piece.
That's kind of like, yeah. I, I don't care for this. When you pull, pull away, this, this always comes up, this is on Tesco, but I don't think it's a problem either. I was talking with one of our new employees who, who's pulled these, and he likes them, and he's pulled a relative, a new one, that gets to breathe in it. It's a local contractor up there that has one of these Tescos. And he kind of quietly fears about this tongue shape. The Brady seems to pull, uh...
Like that?
More directly.
Yeah.
You know, you don't have that action with the air ride, or, either one looks to me like to be a win.
Perhaps the big question... Perhaps the big question is how many? One or two?
Well, I got about sixteen thousand left of my current equipment budget, which, you know, would be as big as that whole Oles group is. We could probably easily find enough to get to thirty-seven thousand, but probably not sixty thousand. I'm not sure if I got that much excess.
Okay. So you're saying we should probably just be bidding on, thinking of one today?
Yeah.
Okay, that's right.
Well, and if we purchase one next year, perhaps, you know, if we accept the Tesco one, maybe Brady will notice that and maybe he'll be cheaper yet.
It'll definitely have a good understanding of what we want next year.
We'll just kind of let it know, yeah. Because we are pretty pleased with the Brady's and fell out north and took these pictures at. He would not say anything contrary to the Tesco or Brady, but he just bought a Brady. And that was his last purchase. And it's been a while since he's purchased. I didn't find anybody that would have a bad mouth for either one of these. But if you went to this Truck Equipment, you'd want to change that tongue? I would, yes.
Okay. Well, I think we're looking for a motion to approve one truck with the round tongue from Truck Equipment Service Company.
I'll make that motion that we approve the low bid from Truck Equipment Service for Tesco up with the addition of approximately five hundred dollars for redesigned or different design tongue.
I'll second that motion. Okay. Everybody have a motion on the floor? It's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Well, let's vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Dave, I have a quick question. In the claims, we got some bridge inspection and it says bridge asbestos slash lead. Is there any asbestos or lead involved here?
There was lead, thankfully, no asbestos. We picked all our, all those box covers. What we're gonna do is bridges, if we're gonna do ahead, I ran into them to do our asbestos-
Mm-hmm.
Lead chromium test because we're required by specification to do that, to identify if there is any lead or chrome or asbestos in. And there was lead in some of the older I B ones. That's your initial.
The rivets or what? Where were the lead?
They used red lead paint.
Oh, paint, okay. On the paint.
And some of the paint had chromium in it. But that red lead paint was a real popular thing back then.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I see you had-
It's good stuff.
Several inspections that you'd done and that asbestos lead kind of stood up and I didn't realize what the situation was with the paint on the bridge.
I invited that here to kind of four, five hundred bucks.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of pricey.
It does.
Yeah, I saw seven of them on there. Oh, eight, nine, nine. There's two more down there. Yeah. And wow, five hundred bucks a pop. Four, five hundred dollars is what it is.
It's something that we actually do on every bridge we do. We've got a lot of structures in there.
So this four or five hundred dollars does nothing do with, does nothing do with inspecting the structure of the bridge as well? It just, it just is-
It's just-
For contaminants. Wow.
Just to let somebody know that there is or isn't. We'll put it out on the plans.
All right. That answered my question. That's all I have, Dave. Anybody else have anything? All right. Thanks for getting that extra quote. It was well worth your time.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Mm-hmm.
I would have thought, oh, good here and there. Those guys could be hot. I was wrong.
Doesn't always pay, but when it does, it works.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Have a good week.
You too.
All right. I think we'll just go on down. I think Teresa's here. We'll start with our insurance. Dave is holding up our agenda out there. He's talking to her. Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, welcome back. I hope you found the road suitable. I think that was an issue a week or so ago.
I was taking eighty across and it was terrible. It was taking, it took me like three hours to get from Des Moines to the eighty. So I called and canceled that name so that I'm never gonna make it there by the time. Well, then I hit five twenty-nine and it was clear as well. I got not far and I canceled another one too. So I was getting used to the traveling all over in the winter and gauging the roads. So I do apologize for having to-
That's fine. We're glad you're here. And let's introduce Selge and Teresa. I don't know, we don't see each other that often. So we'll start with you, Dean.
Dean Shuttler, District Two Supervisor. I'm the new guy on the board.
Mark Beardmore again.
Neil Bach.
Chain Inviter.
I'm Jennifer Sellers. I'm the ASR. I work with Teresa. And Teresa Newhart, I am the account manager with Walmart.
Okay.
And we're not gonna go through this whole thing, page by page, unless you want to. But we'll go through a lot of it, but we won't go through every single page. But I just wanted to, this is the renewal, basically, the initial renewal. Final renewal rates won't be out until first week of April. So we're just gonna start here. First, I guess I should ask, does anybody have any questions for me?
Not right now, I don't.
Yeah, the only- Apparently we've gotten these initial renewal rates, I guess, and we're gonna hit them during this conversation, I assume. So however that flows in.
The first tab is just the welcome letter and the agenda for today. And then just a little bit of small housekeeping items, more important. Timeline of any decisions, key dates after an agenda. Next is just a, this is an employer resource form that we asked order for sent to you later, asking for some more data, just so we have it. So it can go to provide to us, you know, customer service. And we know where your flex is located. If you have any A P revision, you might want to, just so you can, it's minimal information, which shows what you like. It just helps for customer service. Maybe we don't always refer back to you or refer them there, but just to know. The next is just the one, maybe the S B C. Just a table, it's just some housekeeping items. Those will have to be distributed thirty days again before. And then the health plan authorization. We like to look at that every year, just in case there's anybody new that you can give me. Right now, we're only authorized to get to them technically. So if you wanted to add more to it or anything, just send something over. Again, some forms. I can just, two things, just some segmentation information. And then the interim. And we're into the tab two, which is the actual rates. We've got two plans. Which one is your seven fifty plan? You got your increase there. You're still at fifty thousand stop loss. Actually, we start ways top here. Seven fifty plan, which have your drugs included. You have thirty-five single, thirty-one, thirty-nine, twenty-seven employees, eight employee children. You're at the fifty thousand stop loss with the twelve eighteen contract, weekly draw. Coming down to the actual initial rates. Your stop loss is going up to two seventy-two eighteen, which is an increase of eighteen point six two percent. And that's from, looking at your high dollar claims, I think the one person that was really high dollars now not on the plan. So hopefully, next year will be a little bit better of a year. But that's where the big increase there is, the eighteen percent. Your aggregate stop loss, one hundred twenty-five percent. That's no increase. Staying at eight thirty-nine. You're in the right one. Just going straight down to the middle. And then your admin fees went up two point three ninety percent. We were at thirty-five ninety-five. Going up to thirty-six eighty-one. You don't have your drug fee, your pharmacy manager fee. That's actually, looks like it's decreasing because it's just added. That goes on for member, not for contract. But that's actually, the rate's still staying the same. And like I said, we're gonna have a contract for the work fee. And then your network access fee is increasing to twelve oh two, which is a five percent increase. And that's just appears if you've had utilization outside of the state. And then down for the expected claims. These are the rates that we suggest we go to. So the single would go to the six oh nine fifteen, family eighteen sixty-nine forty-eight, employee spouse twelve forty-seven fifty-four, and employee children would go to one thousand one hundred fifty-three twelve. And we projected your increasing claims to be five point seven two. Any questions?
I have a question on the consultant fee. You said we don't need to go both. Let's say we did to negotiate maybe a better rate for accounting. Does Walmart then charge us if we would do that? Is that what that is or?
You can do it two different ways. For self-funded and a group size, usually you would have, you use as a consultant. And basically, we're just, you're paying them, but we're collecting it. So we would be paying it for, yeah, I mean, we wouldn't charge you anything for it.
Or we could just contract them direct. Right, okay.
And you can work that in. And we would, there's separate agreements that you would have to sign off on. It's totally, they would never be able to sneak anything in there. You're the ones approving it. The next is on the fifteen hundred claim. These lists are staying the same. I guess I should clarify that overall increase is five point seven two for both the plans. So however, and I don't know if you guys view them together or separate?
Generally together.
Together, so you give the whole increase to you, you don't, if one plan needs more or the other, you do it all together, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's five point seven two. So I'm gonna go through the numbers again for you, because those are just the, the initial rates.
Sure. The total estimated rates you're calculating are five point seven two percent increase?
For overall, for, yes. On the claims.
Oh, just on the claims?
Just on the claims.
Just on, now I'm with you. Okay.
Overall increase would be eight point two eight.
Yeah, I think we figured eight percent on one and ten percent on the other.
Right.
Is how we had it figured. Yep.
Eight point nine and ten point one.
Yes, yeah. But as it goes up, what's that?
Yeah, it was eight point nine four and ten point oh one, respective, each of them. Yeah, the high deductible had the largest increase.
Right.
Unique, but that's what I guess.
Have you guys already looked through this probably?
Well, we had your initial rates when you were here, you know, the first time, forty-five days ago, probably.
I don't anticipate. I did look through large claims. I have to see a big difference, if any, from annual rates. It's probably history. You don't usually see a huge jump, but you guys do get rates early.
These initial rates we got from you, I think you published in July already. Could that be true?
January.
January, okay. And we're gonna get the final rates on April first?
Yes.
So this isn't for sure, is?
The admin, the only thing that's not for sure is your stop loss rate.
Okay, so any change would be pretty small then, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was looking at here. I don't wanna, I can't guarantee anything, but we don't have, say if somebody was just diagnosed with something and we knew there was gonna be another two hundred fifty thousand dollar claim-
Yeah.
Coming in, something like that.
Okay, all right. Very good. Got it?
And I don't have, I didn't find anything new. So.
You were talking about one time changing that individual stop loss too, huh?
Well, that was one of the considerations that the insurance committee had, but it was, it didn't end up being finalized as one of the recommendations.
What difference did that make on us?
We can run the alternates for a couple of different stop loss amounts. Once you go up, you can't go back down.
Oh, you-
Not with Walmart.
Ooh, that's something.
So he would up to sixty, say. You may see some savings, but you can't then, so say-
Three years and I would wanna go back down.
So it's a one-way street forever?
A one-way street forever.
Okay.
I should say forever, forever.
Yeah.
For a long time.
At this point, yeah.
At this point, they-
What about, what about hypothetically? Is that with any carrier? Or let's say we do it with you and then let's say four years from the line, then we decide to go with, who would be next?
United Hill.
United, yeah.
Typically.
We have stayed with sixty then too?
Yeah. Well, most of the time. So say you were to leave us right now and go to United, they're not gonna let you go lower than fifty typically. I mean, there's always, I mean, there's exceptions, but they don't usually let you go because you'll be wondering why and-
This is news to me that you can't go back down. Is this something new or is it something that's never been explained?
Probably never been, it's probably never been really brought up.
I can't remember. You ever did talk about doing, changing that?
We've talked about changing the stop loss rate, but I've never heard that it was a one-way street. I thought it was negotiable every year or changeable.
It's changeable to go up.
Yeah, that's the one-way street. Okay. All right. Well, that's good information.
Yeah, it's just so that if you go back down, then more than likely, you know, we're ha, I mean, first of all, it would probably be rated so bad, you wouldn't wanna go back down. It would be, the rates wouldn't be desirable. So just to avoid the whole, basically buying the difference down to you. You just say you can't do that.
We'd wanna go back down, meaning that we're having more claims on our side and we wanna-
Right.
Throw more back on them. I can see that.
And like I said, I can't, it's not a, you know, definite no, 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 but it's pretty hard, no. So we could get more, I mean, like I said, we could go up to, could get a four for sixty, see.
Look, your committee didn't make-
No, it was a consideration, but it wasn't, it didn't make our final four.
Then I don't see no reason to go back there.
Well, we were more, we were really looking at more the effects on the employee and ways to save. This would save the county, but it would also save the employee. And I don't know that we really even, I mean, I don't know if we've discussed that stop loss much, did we? Because, I mean, it wouldn't affect the employee-
No.
Raised it to sixty. Maybe it might lower the premium a little bit, but-
Right.
Overall, I don't know that we talked about that that much.
I mean, initially, you're right, it would save, could save money. But then if people are hitting, if the counties haven't paid out that extra ten thousand dollars in claims, next year we turn around and go right back on.
Yeah.
We currently have about a one million dollar- We currently have about a one million dollar reserve, and I think that was part of the consideration there is, you know, whether, you know, we would be willing to, in a sense, you know, gamble that away. Yeah, but it, it never seemed to get below, I believe, seven seventy-five within the last ten years was the lowest that it ever got. So, I mean, I mean, it's still a consideration, it just didn't, you know, gather a whole lot of traction.
It's a lot less sellable if it's a one-way determination, though.
And, and if you raised it to sixty thousand, it would have such an incremental insignificant impact on rates. You'd have to really consider something to the tune closer to a hundred thousand in order for it to have a significant impact on the rates.
Yeah, that's a real good catch.
In, in reality, in a hundred-plus people we have, it's a pretty small pool we're working with, and it could fluctuate a lot more than it has our pool could, it really could, I, I think.
If you would have had sixty this year, you would have gained another sixty thousand in claims. I'm not sure if we got that much saving from the, I mean. But we can, I mean.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt if you just ask them, if you just ask them for four.
I remember when we talked about it, you know, these are the professionals, they do a lot more calculating than we do, you know.
I don't see no need to do it to you.
No, not, no, I mean, I'd, I'd rather export.
The answer might.
If we're gonna do some other options, I mean, that's why we ended up with the other fours, those are the ones we'd rather investigate.
All right, I think we'll continue on.
Yeah, skip to the tab three here. This is just going through the benefits, and I think we, we won't go through, read through these or anything, but I just didn't know if we had any options for plan ideas for changes. There is the only change you have to do, and we talked about this for, um, health care reform, is add an out-of-pocket on the higher deductible plan. Which, right now, they have co-pays on the higher deductible. They have a fifteen, thirty, and forty dollar copay, but they don't have an out-of-pocket. On your one medical, on the seven fifty deductible plan, everything goes towards that out-of-pocket. It all falls under your medical, there's no separation. On the other plan, they have a higher deductible, and then they have a totally separate drug card, where they go, and then they have co-pays, fifteen, thirty, forty, but you pay those forever. So if you were on five forty-dollar drugs a month, you were paying two hundred a month, every month, I mean, just, it didn't go towards anything. Now, health care reform has said you have to have an out-of-pocket on drugs and medical, keep them separate, but there has to be an out-of-pocket. So now, on that plan, and it can't exceed sixty-six hundred or thirteen-two together. So, right now, on that fifteen hundred plan, you have a three thousand out-of-pocket on the medical, and I believe six thousand for family. So what we did, when we ran your rates for this, we included thirty-six hundred.
That's why the increase, that's why the higher increase there. Go ahead.
So we.
That explains that.
Makes sense, so how to add an out-of-pocket. And you can change that, this is just what we ran, so if you were to just sign the paperwork today, that drug plan's gonna give you thirty-six hundred out-of-pocket and seventy, uh, seven thousand two hundred on a family. You can make that lower, but that's the highest you can get. So you're right, in that you don't have any out-of-pocket on the drug plan, so you pay those co-pays forever. After July, those co-pays are gonna go towards this, so if you had three thousand six hundred dollars in co-pays on the drug side.
That's where it maxes out, right?
So I guess the employee's added protection.
Yeah.
So that's something that you wanna, let us know, that's something you want to see lower, and you could make it, um, you can have it near what you have now on seven fifty, let it all go towards that, and you'll increase the out-of-pocket. You're missing some options and some choices to make on that for sure.
What page is that broken out on?
Under the third tab, there's actually not a page number, but at the top, it's going to be dash one eight, it's towards the back of the third tab.
Dash one eight, I see it.
Yes, yeah.
Yep. Ninety, it'd be page one of two.
And then I do have the compare. Oh my goodness, it kinda narrows it down for you, just one more page over.
And then Jennifer, do you know what, what page that is beyond that? Okay, it says prescription drug program.
That's gonna show you the true compare. I think it's the last page.
Yeah, so the last page of section three is comparing that current plan to the original.
That's what I was wanting, yep, okay.
But to your left is to show there's no out-of-pocket.
Yeah.
And this is where we put it. And the reason why we put the thirty-six hundred and the seventy-two hundred in is because that's had the least impact. Nobody's met the thirty-six hundred. And it would be pretty darn tough with a forty dollar copay to hit this.
Hey, you'd have to be on a lot.
Yeah.
For single person, per family.
Mm-hmm.
By adding this benefit, you didn't have complaints increase, you didn't add an increase in the claims, but this has no impact on, there is more claims increased. But this is the only thing you have to make a decision on, and there will be, this will be the forced change, and hopefully the last change from health care reform on health plans.
Tell it gets repealed.
Exactly.
So, once you make this change, do you, can you change it again?
Two more years.
To a different number or not?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And you picked that amount, you said because you felt that no one had reached that limit yet, and you thought that'd be the least impact on.
That's the max you can do. It can go down from here, thirty-six hundred, but you can't go any higher because the government says combine. You can't have more than six thousand six hundred dollar out-of-pocket, or thirteen thousand two hundred, I think, or maybe four hundred. Sixty-six hundred times two, so thirteen two.
Thirteen two.
Right, right, it didn't sound right, so thirteen two. And on the medical right now, you already have a three thousand dollar, so thirty-six hundred is worth what you can do. So that's why we just. Like I said, you can put them together like the other plan, you can separate, you can lower, I mean, you know, lowering it increases your chances of someone hitting you, and then there's claims impact.
What do you, you have a decision on?
Um, well, for sixty days, right. If there's somebody near you.
How much difference does that make if you change that on that premium?
It depends on how much lower you go. If you just don't, um, if you need more exposure, so say you wanted to drop it down to two thousand, that's probably gonna have a, if you were to put like a thousand dollar out-of-pocket on the drugs, that's gonna, someone's probably gonna hit that.
So that's only gonna raise the rates further?
Yeah. I would just kinda hear is how much.
Yeah, and right now, they have no max, so I mean, this is an additional benefit, so, but that explains that additional two percent.
Yes, it does.
My suggestion right now would be to leave it like that, but I don't know if you guys wanna make a decision on that today or not, but.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, that's the second large point of understanding you brought today, so let's keep, let's keep on going.
Do you have any other plans designed you wanted to see increases on the same thing, or?
Is there anything else your committee had come up with, Mark?
Well, no, not, not that it would include today's discussion.
Okay.
Can you just let us know if there's any change you're gonna do a different way, or if it's just like I said, if you were to sign, so what we're presenting, if you were to sign this, we would, we definitely have that change. Any other questions? On to tab four. This is the four report. I see a lot of information, so stop me when you want, and it's actually, I'm trying, I'm trying to get it to calendar year, your benefits are calendar year. So I wanted to get the report to go calendar year, even though you guys go July to July. I wanted to try to get as much of a year, but since we ran it earlier in the year, we went from December to November, so it is a full year comparing a year to a year, so throughout the whole report, even like that, it's not your actual.
More of a year.
What's that?
December one, two thousand nine?
Yeah, I know, yeah, that's incorrect.
So that should be.
Twelve one to twelve, twelve one, two thousand twelve, to eleven thirty of thirteen is prior year. And current year is gonna be twelve one of thirteen to November, there is a four time. And that's laying curve, but it's both of them are gonna be paid through December thirty-first. So I do apologize if that's, if that's wrong. So your claims paid, which is the most current one year, was one point five million. You had one point three in provider savings, and it breaks it down by facility practitioner and blue card. Get a little bit of coordination and benefits. And then the member liability, so your employees paid out one hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-two in deductible coinsurance and copay. And you can see there, it's listed down. Total cover charges, which means actual bill amount to Wilmer, is almost three million, two point nine. And there's that coordination benefits there. And your provider savings was forty-four percent, so that's what brought it down to that one point five, and quite a bit of provider savings. And then the high chart to the right just breaks it out with percentages. These are front and back too, so. And like I said, stop me if you wanna hear more, I won't nickel and dime every single thing for you guys, but the next is the cost of enrollment. So your cover charges, it's prior, it's twenty-eight, and this is just comparing it, breaking it down. Giving you the two thousand thirteen compared to two thousand fourteen on how the claims were paid. Pretty consistent. The other is broken out by percentages, on a covered charge per member. Your average employees were three hundred and twelve prior members, I should say, and then it went up to three twenty-three. So that's gonna sway your numbers a little bit. The next page is the aggregate claims, paid by member. So you had twenty-seven, I'm just looking at the current year, twenty-seven members who didn't have any claims. Seventy members, had between zero and two hundred and fifty. Sixty-one, if you're high to see, and then it gets up to the two hundred to five hundred. You just had one member. So you can see how the, the claim ranges are. Again, that's inconsistent from the prior year.
So, looking at the aggregate claims, is it correct to say that seven people exceeded the fifty thousand dollar, um, aggregate? That's, that's how many we had? Okay.
Now, the very large one is turned, and like you can see, there was, there's not that many that are over seventy-five. And this, you can see the claims paid is pretty comparable to prior year. And next is gonna take it to cost by member. So your employees were forty percent of your membership, your spouses were twenty-two, and dependents were thirty-seven. But your spouses are costing one point four. And this is just bill amounts, this is an actual claims paid, I should flip it over, claims paid, claims paid were six eighty, but it's still spouses, so spouses are costing more than your employees, even though it's half. So I know we had talked, um, about spouses surcharge briefly, this is kind of some more data to support.
Our union representative questioned, um, maybe perhaps our understanding of that, um, but she was, i- if we do choose to investigate that, we need to find out the validity and the legality when concerning unions.
I was just talking about that, I was, I was curious about how, what's the union?
We have four units represented by three unions. And, um, just for the sake of this discussion, um, we are, have one year remaining with one unit. We just signed an agreement, or will be signing an agreement, a three-year agreement with another unit shortly thereafter, perhaps, and most likely, a third unit. The fourth unit is still in limbo, but for the sake of this discussion, we are leaving insurance open. We're, we're settling on wages, and the only other thing that remains open on year two and three of those three-year agreements will be, the language reads rather implicitly that should premiums increase by ten percent or more, which would have been the case here, we can reopen for negotiations, you know, the, the terms of that insurance coverage. Now, if that would be the case, we could have this discussion about, you know, this employee-spouse, you know, issue. But, but she questions whether or not that can actually be done in Iowa.
Oh, yes.
And, and I told her that, you said, oh, yes, um, but.
We can provide documentation from even our legal area, probably as far as the ability to do that.
Yeah, a lot of, I mean, it's, it's absolutely.
Yeah, I told her that, and she's, she, I said, you were quite adamant and confident that it was being done elsewhere, and so.
Because some of the discussion that I've led is the idea that we should cover our employee very well, and if they wanna bring the spouse or the family around, there'd be premium for that. And this documents that that would be very, it, it supports that idea, because only twenty-two percent of people bring their spouses along, but that's over, uh, costs more than, than what the forty percent does.
And it's consistent from prior to current.
Both years, prior and current, prior and current.
I mean, if they don't have other insurance, you wouldn't be penal, I mean, you know, so it's, it's truly just people that can get it elsewhere, you don't wanna leave your spouses hanging out, you know.
Right.
You know, just spouses in general. If they can get the coverage elsewhere, it may cost them a little bit more, but why should the county take the burden necessarily? See what I mean, and it's, it's a sensitive subject, but it's financially, you have to look at it.
And, and the, the point I was taking was, there may be people who have other options, but elect to bring everybody here because of our, um, very good policies. Okay.
So this is just, I was outlining that. The next takes it into, um, hospital. And they break out the hospital charges by, um, OB, surgical, medical, and mental health. And you just, overall, you've had eighty, or fifty-three admissions, or fifty- And they just overall, you've had eighty, or fifty-three admissions for fifty, or four thousand people. They were in hospitals for forty-four days. Average lymphosavages, four point six. And the average hospital charge was fifteen ninety thousand, which is up significantly from the prior year. On a per-member basis, those, well, it's still increased for OB. The down, surgical went up, medical went up, and mental health, only had anyone going inpatient. The next goes a little bit closer at the OB and surgical. You didn't have very many births, the down went down. So the total cover charges and the claims paid stayed about the same. It was very complicated. They must have less births, but they probably come from complicated. On the surgical side, again, pretty consistent. All the actual numbers, but they have announced, we're not seeing, so you must have had some complicated surgeries. And you can see down here with the pregnancy, they show that the admissions you had, except just one maybe, did have complications on birth. And then down below is for surgical, and that's what they were having surgeries on, this is where the top diagnosis is. The next goes into just medical and mental health. The medical would be just a whole non-surgery. So you're in the hospital for flu, flu, or, you know, children ours, but you just think, like, that's something that didn't make surgery. And you can see the down on that, the cost went up. So you must have had more serious situations. And it's the nervous system, I think that's what, like, we didn't have anything like that prior year. Otherwise, it's been kind of consistent here respiratory. And then again, on the mental health, didn't have any inpatient. This takes you down to your who went in for what. So your employees, four had surgery, one was in for medical, spouses, five and five, dependents went in for two. And then this to the right just shows readmissions, which you didn't have any, which is very good, which means they're getting the right care at the right time, the right place, and they're successful. And then the next page down goes about the general diagnosis. Shows you how many days they were in. And it gives you the compare, well, and talk of business. And the diagnosis categories. And the next takes that chart before and gives you their mouths. And the cancer on the top, followed by illnesses and liquors. Any questions on, and it gets kind of detailed. The next one goes into outpatient. And it breaks it out the same way with OB, surgical, medical, and mental health. So outpatient surgeries, medical would be just like usually imaging or tests down at the hospital. And you can see you're down for outpatient compared to what you... The next is just like with the inpatient. It takes us down to the number of visits, the cover charge. Should be cover charge per member if you were to break it out. And then they compare it to Wilmar. Next run down looks at office visits. In the same manner as OB, surgical, medical, and mental health. And you can see by far just regular medical is clearly the winner here in that one. General OB, office visits, or OB, or surgical office visits. And then again, this takes you into, breaks it out by office visits, what you're going in for, the number of visits, what you're spending on each diagnosis in the office. And then the below, after that is just kind of miscellaneous things, home, healthcare, drugs, insurance, in the office, things like that. And then the next gives you by range of age. How many males to females you have, in what age group. And in the pie charts below, they're telling you who's spending the most. So your age fifty-five to sixty-four is thirty-seven percent of your population, but they're spending twenty-seven percent of your claims. Age sixty-five plus are, I'm sorry, I need to flip that. Age fifty-five to sixty-four is twenty-seven percent of your claims, but they're spending thirty-seven percent of your dollars. Your age sixty-five is only one point nine percent, but they're spending eight point five. Zero to four is four point eight percent of your population, but they're spending three percent. Five to nineteen is twenty-two percent, but they're only spending eight percent. Ages twenty to thirty-four are sixteen point three percent of the population, but they're spending twenty-eight percent, which is kind of unusual there.
Yeah, it's pretty high.
Yeah. Thirty-five to forty is eleven point four percent, and they're only spending three point seven, which is usually split. And then your forty-five to fifty-four is fifteen point nine, and they're spending ten percent. So usually you see that twenty to fifty-four, a little bit more. It's usually more top-heavy than it is lower. The younger people usually aren't spending that much money. You might have to look at your large claims because it might be something from there.
Yes, it is.
So it's just smaller groups, and even, you know, personal, sways all of them. And the next one breaks it out by age to see what, what they're using, what are the diagnosis categories. And again, not even out of the ordinary. And the next page down is where they're getting paid care. For inpatient, outpatient. Senior Anthony, regional hospital here. Somebody who's going out of state, but it must be in network. South Dakota Methodist in Des Moines. And then the A's. So you definitely have some people traveling.
Would the out-of-state include anything in Omaha that's in-network?
Yes.
Yeah, so out-of-state is out-of-state.
Out-of-state is out of South Dakota and Iowa.
Okay. Is South Dakota in, in-network?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing I can think of when you just asked about that hospital would be if they contracted for some reason with Iowa Direct, which most don't. Usually contract with the state. But some of those, like in Omaha, there's some, there might be a few that do contract with Iowa. But typically it would be considered.
Reason I ask is, you know, part of that discussion within, you know, we've talked about perhaps looking at HMO, you know, and the disadvantage of that being, you know, that we, somebody couldn't consider, you know, something out-of-state, and most, namely, you know, Rochester. But, but, you know, if you look at these numbers, I mean, it's very infrequent someone, someone goes there.
No. You got...
Eighteen out-of-patient.
Yeah, you got a lot.
Eighteen, quite a bit of money too.
Okay, but I mean, okay, and, and I was looking at cases, okay, I mean, it's outpatient quite a little bit more, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Would the other in-state still be in-network presumably then, right? Because anybody in-state is in-network, right?
Most cases, yeah, and this would be in-network.
Okay. Thank you.
So those are just all the other little hospitals everybody's going to?
Okay.
Manny. Manny.
Yeah, I mean, just any other.
Sure, yeah.
Lake City, whatever, yeah.
But a lot, I mean, in each of those defense, the services they're getting in Omaha, they would just have to, I mean, there's usually places that can do it within the state too. They just may have to travel.
Right.
Because how far would it go in this, Omaha, about even that, an hour wait?
Hmm, two hours, call it two hours, mm-hmm.
Depends on where you're driving.
Boy, that's, and Iowa City is much further.
Yeah, Iowa City is further than Omaha, yeah.
It does get hard in the first title to go in each of them. And then the last is these in-out of-network, which, again, you guys are going to network. And the next is the pharmacy. And what they do with the pharmacy is they put both of the plans together, and that's what all we're going to look at. So the first set of numbers here is both other plans, the drug card and SCMM, the drugs that are covered under your health. And then the last two sets are broken out, we will put some of those, we're just going to do it overall. So just going from year to year, you have three hundred twelve average number of members, up to three hundred twenty-three for this year. Breaks it down by employee, spouse, independent. Pretty consistent on your number of RXs, you're up a little bit. The claims fall right in line with a small increase. You had a little bit more pharmacy savings. Coordination benefits is pretty much nothing. What the members had to pay out is consistent, consistent with prior to fifty-eight dollars. Claims paid though, so they got cheaper drugs, it's like the year before. And your generic went up three percent. So that's very good.
Yeah, that's a fairly high percentage, I think, as I recall from earlier meetings.
Yes, very good.
Don't need a whole lot of patient or, I mean, member education there then?
No. And especially with your plan, having it all going towards deductible, it's really good that people are still getting generics. Because your plan doesn't really drive them to the generic, the generous plan, but you're, they're doing it anyway, so that's fabulous. And then it breaks it down by member, per member per month, per member per year, on a cost basis. The next one brings it down to just generics, comparing your group to Wilmar. And like you said, you guys are eighty-seven, Wilmar's at eighty-five. The average cover charge for RX is one hundred and eight compared to Wilmar's one thirty-six. Number per year, number of RXs is pretty consistent. Cover charge per year is lower. And the number of RXs per year is about the same. And then the cover charge is lower, so you guys are getting cheaper drugs than, than on average at Wilmar for business. Cover charges were three hundred eighty-eight thousand. Provider savings is two hundred thirty-four. Members paid fifty-eight thousand. So you paid about a hundred, almost one ninety-five thousand in drugs. You have sixty percent provider savings. And again, we are switching vendors, one one of sixteen, we have Catamaran right now. We'll be switching to Caremark, who's also our specialty provider right now. And there'll be more to come on that. These are the pharmacies everybody's going to. Carol.
Bath and Jerry.
Thank you. Kmart Pharmacy, Walmart, Walgreens, Lincoln Highway Pharmacy, and then the different high... And then it shows who's getting what. And it looks like that first one, that Carol, that must be an outlier, so it must have some expensive drugs there. Must have been a condition that warns that, because there's no generic, there's low generic. And you can see who's prescribing generics. I know we had went through this kind of before, but the top drug classes are ADD, bipolar, psychonic, high blood pressure, diabetes, antidepressants, antifungals, a lot of infections, contraceptives, diabetic, cholesterol, and those are your top. And then the claims paid by distribution is showing eighty-six members didn't have any prescriptions. Hundred and eighty only paid, only a hundred and eighty different prescriptions, only paid out twenty-five hundred. And again, it's consistent with the top where the numbers get smaller, but the dollars get bigger. And then the next to the rest of this is just breaking it out by the drug plan versus the medical plan. And the next, that five is going into wellness, the twenty-four seven portion that we have. It's a nurse line that we use, I've looked through, and in two thousand fourteen, no one called in prior. Actually, I don't know, some people were actually using that twenty-four seven nurse line. If you have questions on your health, your health with navigation, in the healthcare system at all, there's that twenty-four seven line on the back of your card that members can call into. And we can save some information on that.
People, if you were...
Yeah, exactly, it just has. And this is, like you said, some more information on emergency room visits, getting the right care at the right cost. Reminder about walmart.com. You know, we have, we have fifty-eight people signed up for walmart.com to bed. Those who are going to let his spouses, will be precise. Walmart.com, mobile device, I think this is just kind of getting some extra information. Reminder about the blue three sixty-five, just some added information. The next is the wellness. It's wellness, and I know you guys, you've taught, you've kind of talked about that stuff before, but this is the updated pricing for what we're going to do. The wellness, if you want to do, of course, you've got your personal health. The wellness, if you want to do, of course, you've got your personal health assistance twenty-four seven, that's where you charge, or utilization management, that is included in your admin fee. Advanced care management is included. And, um, we're actually following up against care management. COPD used to, used to charge for that, we used to charge for, um, just heart failure, extra support for those conditions, stomach disorders, back pain, fibromyalgia, to get extra, more individualized, um, care. Flyers, reach out when you have those conditions, you used to have to pay, those are now free in two thousand and fifteen. Full efficiency creates in your admin. Um, the only thing now is the condition support, which is asthma, coronary artery disease, and diabetes. And the only thing I saw that you guys would ever maybe want to be interested in, looking at your current claims, would be the diabetes. If you're ever interested in learning more about everything.
And per contract is per member, correct?
Per contract would be per employee.
Per employee.
Mm-hmm, per contract. Per member is belly buttons.
Right, okay.
So that one twenty-eight would be per contract, so you're kind of spreading out the cost of it to everybody?
That was one of the recommendations or that the insurance committee did suggest, is that we have a true wellness program. And, and, um, that might be something that, you know, we'll discuss here on a later date, but that was, that was one of the recommendations that the insurance committee came up with. And, you know, hopefully that that would impact rates, you know, in years to come.
And we can definitely send them back out if they're interested, just as a.
Yeah, we may talk to you about that.
And one is falls into the next page, is the pregnancy support. For to help with high-risk pregnancies, you could do two oh six for participant or a one cent per member per month. So that'd be about thirty, we got three hundred and forty people, maybe about thirty-five dollars a month. So for their year size, you probably ought to do more though, per matter of months opposed to the two oh six. And that'd be per visit. And then the next is the online wellness, and this is something that they would go into more, is if you fall into a wellness program, for the eight cents per member per month, you could do the online wellness assessment. Members go in, fill out a, about fifteen-minute wellness assessment. If you wanted to do like biometrics and things to get a full picture of it. That's additional money, but that, we can load that in there and then you can get reporting on it. Not personalized, and values would never be on average basis. This is just the wellness options. Like I said, there is more to it, and if you want to go too much into it, we can, we can do a great job on helping launch them and giving you a lot of ideas. Again, this is just some more information for wellness centers that goes along with that. All these tips, there's a thesis, I don't know if you guys have, do you guys have a vision plan now, like a volunteer? If you ever have any questions on this, you can help with that. Going, there's the dental. Coverage, first, and then our flex. And then the last tab is just the healthcare reform, which is a lot of stuff you probably already have. This is a reminder. The only thing we have really for healthcare reform is the ten ninety-five Cs and Bs. Ten ninety-five Bs are the forms, employees that's fully insured, so just in a smaller community, people have full insurance, they'll find that everybody knows exactly what they have. A lot of people are probably getting ten ninety-five Bs from Walmart right now, and that's for fully insured, and that's the form you give to your tax preparer. So that shows you how comprehensive you'll have to have for two thousand and fifteen, but for the two thousand and fourteen tax year. But Walmart is providing them. If you're self-funded, it would be on the county, they're, it's a ten ninety-five C, and they'll have to provide those next year. And the only thing that I'm kind of recommending is that, um, for next year, you will have to show, do have, everybody fill out a waiver now, if they don't want to, because you have to prove, um, offered coverage to everybody. And it used to, you didn't have to have that proof, but now. Sign off, so if you didn't want insurance, you just say no.
So if somebody would say no when they were hired, do they have to say no over here?
I'm doing it because it's on an individual basis, I'm just. I may be saying that for the sake.
So you're saying next year she'll have to provide a form for everybody that's got coverage?
She'll have to show she, she offers coverage to them somehow.
No, but if you need for the insurance, for tax, for her tax.
Yes, and she'll have to show proof of how long, and I actually have some information up because it is a good checklist.
I thought Walmart was doing those forms.
Not ten ninety-five Cs. Walmart will, for full insurance, we are.
Even next year?
We may help you with some reporting, but we won't be able to actually do them for you.
That's because of yourself.
And we haven't, we haven't, um, it hasn't been confirmed of what we've been providing, but a lot of it, we should do that. And maybe we will do this. They won't uniform, they don't need it to be anything.
We're worried about that one, I guess.
But, um, what I've been recommending is that keep a track of how many, if you can, just kind of keep track of how many, that's people that have, if you.
Well, we run those a lot, so everyone, it shows that.
And there is some additional, I'm going to have to ask, but I don't, not give too much, stuff into it right now, just because I'm not sure if it's going to stay.
Is that in here? I was just looking for that.
Just more stuff about it, and there is a link that just came out that's got a little worksheet that you can do to see where you're at right now.
Okay, and I see that's not until twenty eighteen anyway.
So this likely, I apologize, tab eighteen is just a lot of healthcare information that you certainly have.
So we consider.
Yeah, we lost grandfather in twenty thirteen.
Well, they say it's good to read a book a month, I think we got through one today.
If you get tired.
I have a lot of information, but it's nice to have it all in one.
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Firm rates again, first week April, and, um, yeah, what can you tell us about Compass? Familiar with Compass?
Well, there's a, internally, internally, we have, we use a part of it, but what are you asking?
Well, it, it was brought to our attention by a broker, and said that it's a service that we, we can use whether we choose them or not. It's a, it's a, you know, a service that, you know, whatever carrier we end up selecting, we can use Compass, and Compass would help shop, because, just because they're in-network, that doesn't mean they all do their services at the same price, is our understanding. And that this will help, you know, send our members to perhaps the lowest-priced one, which in turn would save them in their deductible, and then also save us in our claims experience down the road. Wasn't that your understanding of it, too?
We have some tools within Walmart that can price people, we have some very similar, I know exactly what I can, yeah, but I probably take a broker, too.
You can tell my.
Probably tell you the broker, that was probably, I believe, it's probably, um, promoting it, but it, we, we do have a tool within Walmart dot com that's very similar to that, that shows you pricing in different places. It's not as, um, developed as the Compass, but for you guys, you don't need to know what it's like over the country. Or, if that makes sense, so I mean, we have, there's, there is a tool within Walmart that can give you price comparison. And steer people to different places.
And all the, all of our employees have access to that, if they sign up.
Okay, so they only have access if they're signed up for Walmart dot com, which you had said we have fifty-eight or so, so, yeah. Yeah, if we, if we do any, you know, member education, perhaps that's something we should promote, because, you know, all of us, I'm, myself included, if, you know, my doctor refers me to somebody, I'm just going to go.
Right.
I mean, without much shopping around, I mean, I go, okay, well, they're close, or they're easy, or whatever, but, so many times, um, you know, there, there's more options available simply by, you know, driving a few extra miles and.
And you can search for your provider on Walmart dot com without actually being logged in as a member. You can locate providers.
But will it give pricing?
That is, that you have to write, that you have to be a member of, I just wanted to point out that a person could search for a provider without actually being signed in
Okay.
as a member on the Walmart dot com.
Yeah, in terms of another provider.
So, okay. I don't know, that tells you, here's a list of doctors, one does it the cheapest, does it rate them how well they do the job?
It actually does.
Does it?
Okay. Is that important? No, I'm teasing. I'm teasing.
If it's true, it is.
We're outside my wife, but no, that's, that's not true. You didn't hear that, Pam.
It does, it's really, I mean, it's, it's a, you have to get in there, and you kind of have to know what you're doing, but it's like within the online, um, tool, it is, it is very helpful. It's just getting people, even with Compass, it's just getting people there.
Right.
Because, you know, even if they go out, they see that, their doctor says, go here. Just go what the doctor says.
So you can look up and see if that doctor made it good, huh?
Get rate.
But again, it's only as good as the information.
Yep.
And that information in there, does that come from what, past patients, or what?
The, um, the Crest Blue Shield Association is actually manages all of the.
Who rates the doctors? Patients, or the insurance company, or who?
I'd have to get back to you to know exactly, it's a combination, I believe. It's based on readmissions.
I was going to say readmissions would be one of them.
It'd be, because that is a big part of it.
Statistics part of it, I'm just, okay.
But it does range, they do charge, you'd be surprised on how much cost to get any surgery done here as opposed to there, and.
Oh, he gave us an example on tubes, you know, children's tubes.
Oh, yeah.
And, I mean, it's so common, and it was over a thousand dollars, was over what he was referred to, so. Got to remember how those referrals work sometime, too.
Yes, yep.
And I mean, with Walmart, again, at the end of the day, we're only going to allow a certain amount.
Of course, right.
For that procedure, so they can charge as much as they want.
Sure, right.
We're still only going to allow.
Yep. Anything else, Court?
Okay, well, um, I don't think, unless there's other questions, uh, want to thank you, Teresa and Jennifer, for coming in here.
Thanks for coming out.
You did answer a lot of my questions and our questions, so, thank you.
Well, found us some new things, too.
Yeah. Stay in town and shop a while, okay? All right, let's move along here, um, got a couple of plats. They're a corrected plat, and then, um, and then they plotted out five lots in a corrected plat, the way it looks. Down there by Manning.
Uh, these were all corrections, weren't they? All pretty much the same tract alone, wasn't it?
They, there was two tracks, and they did a correction on the, um, one of the reference points was incorrect. And then after they did that correction, they divided one of them up into five different lots.
Well, I think there's lots of them that developed before this, because there's.
Houses, houses on. Yeah.
This is correcting an error from the back.
A long time ago, yeah, okay.
I'm making motion, we have two of the plats.
I'll second that motion.
All right, then moving second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those. Motion carry. Then is the payables. Are there any questions in the payable, right? Dave answered my questions on the asbestos and lead inspection for the bridges.
That was one of mine, yeah, too.
And the only other one I had is the first one on there for our publications at Manning. I, it was a pretty big amount, and it covered quite a few. How does that rate compare with our other papers? More expensive, and I've just, question I have is, do we have any other options, um, for negotiating price or having a double publication to it? Right now, we have Carol, Manning, and Coon Rapids for our official publications.
Code says we have to have three.
Hmm?
Code says we have to have three.
So they got us locked in. Also by the code, they can, they cannot exceed certain charges, too?
I didn't read that, I just.
I thought at one time there was something about that they couldn't exceed certain charges.
Would the glen graphic qualify for the third one?
It don't have enough publication, uh, circulation, as I recall.
Circulation is enough.
It's my understanding that we have the ones that we have to have. Based upon subscriptions.
Okay. But was that over time? I mean.
What, this twelve hundred and thirty-four dollars? It was over about a month period?
Wow.
It was several, I, I got the, I had Emily pull that claim, and, yeah, it was over a month period of time. There were two hundred here, three hundred there, eighty there, different things.
They are higher. Carol's the newest.
You don't want to get me started on it.
Yeah, and my.
That's right, because when I saw that, I looked it up to see if we were required to have three.
As, as our, everybody gets more modernized, I, I think we should legislative look at allowing them to publish just a little small thing that says the information's available online here or at the courthouse, if you're.
One thing that I ran into when I was campaigning.
Yes.
Was that one of the papers, I know I signified that I wanted a certain size, and they ballooned it up and charged me an enormous price for it. We negotiated it down, but that is one thing that you may not want to look into, too, is that, you know, how big does it have to be, and can it be?
What is the required font?
Yeah, what is the required, yeah, what is the required size, or, you know, you know, quarter page, we don't need that. Squeeze it down, I, but it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, well.
Joan made the comment, too, that, well, you've got to be careful about that, because they will do that, and they'll charge you for that.
Well, my, what I don't understand is they know to shrink it down, I mean, we've sent them minutes for how long?
They need to fill space.
But it seems like over time, they get bigger, and those get bigger, and I don't understand why we have to keep.
And I'm not trying to slam any of them, have you looked at any monitor lately?
Well, I looked at it when we ran our ballots for our election, and that was expensive.
So that's probably.
Something that's got to be said, again.
I think she, when Joan did it, I think she required that.
That's what I was taking something to quote about, they cannot exceed certain charges, too, I thought. So much per column inch, or whatever.
When I saw that, Mark, about twelve hundred and thirty-four dollars, I didn't know what it was, I thought we could probably do a bulk mailing almost with that, but it was for enough different things that that wasn't, uh, doable.
Okay, now you said it's by code that we have to have three papers, what happens if you've got a company that don't have three papers?
I don't know, we talked about that. Because I'm sure there are some.
Sure, there's.
If, price is if available.
Well, it doesn't, it, it says three.
Autumn is one of them.
Now, there might be a administrative rule or something that falls along with the code section we were looking at that says. It said three, because I'm like, well, what do we do if, you know, one of them closes, you know, and it says here we're supposed to have three?
Two years ago, the state legislature took this issue up, and it, it had a lot of steam going into it until the newspaper association stopped it, and.
You hear the expression, never argue with somebody who buys ink by the barrel, that's what the problem was.
They're strong.
You don't laugh over that.
I know you're listening, that's okay.
I know you're listening, that's okay. Virginia, comment?
I got a question. Does the newspaper office has to be in the state, I mean, in the county? And what I was thinking about is, like, the Observer, would that have a higher-
Has to be in the county.
...rate than Manning? Number of people that would take the Observer over people that take Manning Monitor?
It has to be in county, it's my understanding that they publish in Crawford County. Okay.
Like, the tri-county would be an odd...
Well, and the Observer and the Manning Monitor work together a lot, so, the Rocket's all together with them.
Wouldn't it be Manila?
Yeah, Manila, there's a whole bunch of them that involve that Rocket, but it's all part of it.
If, if a certain paper would not, is there, is there a circulation that they have to require?
Need a number?
Yeah.
I don't know.
From my recollection, the code says there's gotta be a minimum, but I'm no expert on it.
I would suggest that we look the code up and get kind of updated on it.
Yeah, and if, say if the Manning Monitor doesn't meet the circulation requirement, could we not use it?
It's a fairly important thing, I mean, it's part of our budget, it's printed right on our budget, you know, who our newspapers are. I mean, it's a fairly...
Yeah, and for fiscal sixteen, we've already received their letter, we've already printed that as the official paper.
Right.
I guess it'd be something in the future for...
Okay.
And I asked that question, and we looked at it, according to the code, you have to have three. Now, I didn't go in, start looking, you know, they have all those subsections behind all the lines, I didn't go and look every single one of those up, but those might address where if you only have two papers...
To save you some time, why don't you get ahold of your ISAC and affiliate?
Absolutely. I was gonna say, same thing, in fact, legally, we've never used our hour, or whatever, we get free from ISAC, and I think this, and it's gotta be for certain things, I think this would qualify. Why don't you shoot that over to them? We're thinking on the same things, gee.
Christie-Harsburg.
I, they've gotta file a foot thick on it, because I know this has been approached many times before, but, yeah, I thought this was, like, over a quarter or something like that, but over a month.
It was about a month, yeah.
Seems really high, but...
When I read it, it looked like they do monthly billings, and...
Exactly.
All right, very good. All right, back to the-
Thanks for raising the question.
We kinda got-
Forgotten, too.
The claims, I guess, is where we started, are the payables, as we now call it, and that one we questioned very well. Were there any other questions?
None here.
None, your opinion? A motion to approve the claims.
All right, moving second to approve the claims. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. All right, Board Adjustment, Board of Adjustment vacancy. My understanding, we visit about this, and the difference is, we've got an official statement from Craig Rawls that he is gonna discontinue serving, and my understanding of Marty is on this, so, we should probably talk, do you know where he is on this? He was looking for a replacement. So we need to find a replacement for Craig Rawls on that. So, let's keep it on the radar, and Marty may have a name in hand that he hasn't gotten hold of, let's check with him when he gets back. Otherwise-
Do you know, is there a particular reason why he's not doing this, or...
He's moving to Des Moines.
He's moving away.
Always moving.
He's relocating, yeah. He's, he won't be a resident of Carroll County any longer. That's the reason.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so, I don't think we need to vote or anything, it's just a point of information that is important for us. Okay, Munir Management Updates, we have two of them. Twin Rivers Port, Mark Schrader has got one, it's his annual update, he's added acres, changed crop rotation using Munir Management, Munir Analysis, excuse me, and the second one, HR Partnership, they've made the following changes, they've added, changed crop rotation, and they're using Munir Analysis. Okay, now, need to set a public hearing date for the county budget, very important thing here, and perhaps review the budget a little bit, now that Courtney has it finalized from the decisions we've been making as we go along. I'm gonna ask Courtney to hit a few highlights, and we need to set a public hearing date.
So if you look at page three, which is where the levies are at, I guess we can go over those, general basic, three point five, which is the standard, or the max, in order to levy for supplemental. General supplemental levy point three-three-one-zero-four. So the total countywide would be three-point-eight-three-one-zero-four for cities slash urban areas. And the rural levy is three-point-zero-zero-three-five-eight, for a total rural levy of six-point-eight-three-four-six-two. Overall, those levy rates will generate approximately six million, six-hundred-ninety-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. The first page will actually be what we publish in the paper, but it's kinda nice, you can go through and see the percentage increase or decrease in certain areas. The one that stood out to me was the line twenty-one, there's a thirty-three-point-one-eight decrease percent, and that would be primarily from the ICP tip, of course, fiscal year fourteen, fifteen? No, fourteen, sorry, fiscal year fourteen, we did that. So, that is why there's such a big decrease there. Capital projects, there's a pretty large increase, that's probably mainly due to the trail, because we have to budget for all of the expense in that trail, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight, whatever it is. Because that money will all be coming in and out of, yeah, like a pass.
Yeah.
So it's, that's why that's so much.
And...
So, I'm not sure if, I mean, do you wanna review any more of that, or do you want me to kinda go over the sheet that I did, or...
Yeah, I'll just make a few comments. I looked at our levy rate, and on ISAC, they list all of the counties and what the levy rates are. Fiscal year fifteen, we were ninety-seventh, there were only two counties that had lower levy rates than Carroll County. If they use the same levy rate, or increased levy rate, and nobody else changes, we'll still be ninety-seventh. So who's ninety-eight, ninety-nine? Ninety-nine is Dickinson County, they've got an extraordinary amount of value around Lake Okoboji that they bank off of that. The other one is Mahaska County, which is Oskaloosa, and I wondered what we had in common. Well, I found out what we have in common, we're both not giving anything to mental health, levying anything for mental health this year. That's what we both have in common. And so, compared to other counties where, there's only two counties that have a lower levy rate in the state, I assume it'll be the same or very close again with this budget. So, with that comparison, I think we should be very happy, but we need to understand that we are gonna start paying for mental health a little bit next year, and quite a bit more the year before, and this is gonna change. So, we're just kind of enjoying the savings while we can, but two years from now, it's gonna be a different story.
Well, several years ago, we all, all said and said, we're having these savings now, and there will be a day of reckoning coming. And, yeah, I think that's, those days are coming, the way it will be, because, again, because we haven't charged on mental health.
Right. So, anyhow, that's what I sort of found in my little bit of research there.
You don't think that the other counties will change that dramatically?
I don't know, but I would say to lose our position at ninety-seventh, some other people are gonna have to drop their levy quite a bit, and maybe a county or two may have an increased valuation for some reason, and that will help them and cause that to happen.
It looked like there was a big, quite a disparity between us and Dickinson County.
Yeah, there's, and the thing that's-
They're gonna hold on to that for quite a while, the way it looks.
I think so.
Till the lake falls away.
Another thing we have going into our favor is there are forty counties, including us, that have no debt, and they're pretty much on the better end of the levy situation, because there's no debt service. And ironically, Dickinson County also has some debt they're servicing, not very much, but they have some debt. I think it's from the new courthouse they built a few years ago.
Yeah.
They did a huge structure there, so, I'm just guessing what the debt is from, I just know that there's debt there.
Are you figuring the countywide levy?
I figured the rural plus countywide.
The rural plus county, so the total?
If you take the total countywide, we were ninety-seven last year. If you take the total of rural plus countywide, we were also ninety-seven last year. And that second one is the one I anticipate not changing at all. The other one, I think we could easily go down maybe two notches, but not very much. And purely speculation what the other counties are doing.
Sure. Well, as we know, I mean, it's a nice thing to profess, but we all know that levy rate is only a byproduct of mathematics.
Absolutely.
You know, we're still spending, you know, eighteen million dollars worth of expenditures this year, and that said, expenditures can ebb and flow based on what passes through that somebody else pays for. But we're still benefiting from reserves, healthy reserves.
Absolutely.
We are still benefiting, and we're still, I think this is our fourth year in a row, I believe, this is my sixth budget, I believe, and that we're in, you know, in deficit spending. You know, we are, and we are biting into reserves, two million dollars this year? And we know part of that still remains mental health, we get that, but we're now going from an eight-point-eight-million-dollar reserve to a five-point-five. And, and what we're doing is, we're setting up future boards for the other shoe to drop.
And I think, I know where you're going with it, and I think we, we're gonna have to watch, I think there's a point we're gonna have to stop that, but at the same time, you're saying projected, remember, always on the end of the year, we have a lot of departments turn a lot of back in, so our reserves don't kinda wind up...
Count on that, this year.
Well, and we also have a lot of reserves, there are a lot of departments that like to spend it up, too. So, that being said, I'm gonna share this with you. You know, I'll have a copy, I'll keep one for Marty, and I'm only, I'm only picking on one budget here, but this was a decision we were making during the workshop here, and I wanna take a, you know, we've all made these campaign pledges to keep taxes low, in whatever, however way you wanna frame that. We can't continue spending the way we are and keep taxes low, we can as long as we have reserves, but once these reserves get, the way this is headed, gentlemen, let's call a spade a spade, and take a good, hard look at our spending habits. Now, this is an ambulance budget history that in just four years is up over forty percent. That's just one budget. Going down the list here, you know, by service area, I see sixteen percent, four percent, thirteen percent, ten percent, eighteen percent, eleven percent is another one. Once again, we had one in the treasurer's office where we had an opportunity, I realize that that's a decrease, but once again, we had an opportunity to truly make some savings there, and we're gonna allow that to pass. So, so I think we're failing to be hard-nosed when it comes to spending habits, and then we're also failing to not take opportunities when they arise. And this one, to me, stands out like a sore thumb. I serve on this committee, I want that ambulance to service to be as good as it possibly can be. I don't think throwing more money is going to do that. They do a fabulous job the way it is, and we're seeing a budget that's gone from nine-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars to one-point-three-million dollars. And that's not with additional calls or, you know, demands, I mean, Pat cited six-hundred more calls from two thousand and eight, I haven't found that number to be correct yet, but I'm not done with that one yet. We've added on staff down there to help alleviate his position, we're buying more stuff. What I kinda see as a fundamental challenge for a lot of governments today is technology, and the advent, as continuous, technology continues to develop and unfold, we, there's companies out there that are preying on governments, if you will, to sell this additional technology. You know, we did it last year in the assessor's office, where we did this hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar pictometry, you know, a service we couldn't do without. You know, Pat talked about some of this GPS technology, we saw it in the comm center, hundred-thousand-dollar GEO comm, a mapping service, you know, all of this new technology that continues to be under development, that we can't afford to be without. That's where a lot of this is coming from. A lot of this spending is coming from what I call truly discretionary spending. And, you know, my thoughts are this, is, we have a tendency, and I'll be the first to admit, I'm just as guilty as any of us, we live in a budget year, we so compartmentalize what we do financially for the people of Carroll County, it, we're, are we truly taking a good look at what's, what's gonna come to pass here in two or three years? And we're setting up future boards for much harder decisions than what we've been beneficiaries of. It's easy to take it out of reserves when you have reserves, but when you no longer have reserves, there's only one direction to go, gentlemen, and we've all made these pledges to keep taxes low.
All right, I'm gonna stand up, just a little bit in self-defense, I know exactly what you're saying, Mark, and we're kind of at the end of the battle here, we've been through the whole budget, and as you're talking, I just listed some things that have been proposed. Conservation, I know I proposed having a larger percentage of that be loan as opposed to gift, you know, but we made progress, and I do, I am glad that the idea of loan did get approved. And the mileage, I wanna thank the board for hopping on board with that, it's not quite as low as I wanted it, but we made progress, I think we made some adjustment on mileage that not all counties do. I know there was a proposal with the treasurer to change that budgeted amount, but it couldn't get a second. I know in the board of supervisors, there was a motion to give us not quite as big as a raise as what we got, but, and I believe that did get a second, but it did not pass.
I don't recall a motion on that, treasurer, I certainly would have said that.
I proposed, I proposed specifically that, to reduce that budget, and I couldn't get any traction in our discussion.
But I didn't recall it being a motion.
I never made it into motion, I didn't, I knew, I knew it wouldn't pass, I guess, Mark. I knew it wouldn't pass.
We had my support.
It was quite obvious that that wasn't gonna pass. Now, on the plus side, when we talk about our reserves going down, first of all, we're doing the right thing, we're correcting mistakes of the past in a way, but a little bit, it's not quite, everything you said was absolutely true, Mark, but one thing we also have to acknowledge is the fact that we have a million dollars in our local option sales tax that is exactly where that money should be positioned. We're much better to have reserves there than anywhere else, I think we've discussed that, and this board is entirely bought into that. So, I wanna compliment the board on, I think we've all got a good understanding of that and done that. So I think the local option sales tax is a real feather in our hat, where other counties have mortgaged and borrowed money against, for example, TIF, their wind turbine income, and we've hung on to that, we've kept that going, we're debt-free. So, I guess the bottom line is, we've had a lot of discussion, each of us, I've kinda explained some battles, I've- I've lost. Each of you've had some, your own little battles that you've lost. None of us got everything we wanted. But at the end of the day, Carroll County is in very sound financial position, and we're posed very well for whatever challenges or opportunities are in the future. I think we're set very, very well. And we fully know and recognize that two years from now, we are gonna have additional expenses with mental health because we're using the reserves. But the only right thing to do is enjoy the savings now and know what's coming in the future. So, I know, that's what I'm saying. I appreciate everything the board has done working with this. It's unrealistic to expect everybody to agree with me. I know I'm not the other side. I wasn't agreeing with you, but we fought through it. We took the vote, and we went forward, and very professionally, very professional way of doing business.
Well, I agree with you, Neil. It's not, everybody got what they wanted. You know, and when we start out with this reserves, we knew we were too high. We were getting some flack from the public, and rightfully, we, we did what we wanted to accomplish, and that was reduce those. Yeah, there's a point, I think there's a point we have to start backing off that and being a little more, watching how those play out. Again, you know, like you said, Carroll County's very fortunate. We're not, no debt. I think we're fortunate a lot of ways. We take a lot of stuff in this community for granted that we don't, we walk by and live by every day. I mean, we got a very diversified economy. You know, is everything gonna be peaches and roses? No. But it seems like Carroll County's always wound up coming out on the top, on the cream of the can. And I think, you know, a lot of it goes back to our, a lot of our, our past history of our, the way our people have worked and lived in this community, and it's gonna stay that way. And I hope it stays that way. So, and I think we got a lot of positive things coming in the future. We're one of these counties that we do have valuation that does increase and change, and not like some counties where it just keeps deteriorating and eroding. Those are the counties that are gonna have the problem.
At this time, if anybody wants to make comments, that's very acceptable. But what we have is we've got the final budget on the board. We're, if we want comments, more we can. At some point, I think we need to put this up for a public hearing, set the date and go ahead. If there is something we want to amend in this today, I think we've pretty well voted on everything, but if there's something somebody wants to bring up as specific amendment, I know there's some things I'd like, I guess that's appropriate. But today, we need to give Courtney a final thing to take.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm not trying to slow that down at all. My point is, is we just have the budget before us, and this thing's gonna be etched in stone in less than two weeks. And the point I want to make is, is we've gone from a fifty-seven percent reserve to a thirty percent reserve, which, which is still above recommended amounts. I think the ISAC recommends twenty-five percent or more.
Yes.
So, it's, I want to make sure that that's clear. But I guess what I'm saying is, is, I mean, whoever's on this board in fiscal year eighteen, I think is gonna have a day of reckoning.
Well, Mark, as time goes on, there's always gonna be harder decisions to make up here. It's been that way since I started, 'cause every year, this job has changed.
I'm sure you've seen it, yeah.
And Neil can say the same thing.
The easy thing would have just been let the reserves sit there and not save people taxes and coast. That would have been the wrong thing to do. I think we showed leadership in what we did, and we did the right thing.
I'm not suggesting raising the levy rate. I'm, I'm suggesting getting a better handle on spending.
Spending.
Because right now-
Well, and I think, Mark, in your point, some of that is technology, and we're in that mode where there's a lot of changes in technology, and I think we're gonna see a lot more. I don't think, we want to be the last person to jump on technology either. I mean, I think we've always been leader in that, and some has been to the good, and there's some, some things aren't. Well, we got these day and service contracts, particularly one that you have a heartburn with, and, you know, they just keep, they're there every year, stab you. What are you suggesting we have a public hearing?
March ninth.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we set this public hearing for March ninth, ten a.m.
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion to have the public hearing for the FY16 county budget at March ninth, Monday, ten a.m. Is there any further discussion on that?
Do we want to just, for the media, go over this? I think this would be appropriate to do so.
Okay. All right. Let's continue the business on the floor. I don't think it's gonna change this business.
No, it's not.
We've got a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, and then let's vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Okay, Mark's request to go with this, and I think it's very appropriate. So, go ahead.
I think this has been down for several years, based upon what levy we're gonna be asking. So, I took a house valued at a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. The rollback is fifty-five-point-seven-three-three-five percent, which brings the taxable to sixty-nine-thousand-six-six-six. At an urban levy rate of three-point-eight-three-one-oh-four, property tax is about two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. It's an increase of approximately sixteen dollars. The Mutaki forty-acre tract of land, approximate value eighty-six-thousand-six-seventy. The egg rollback is forty-four-point-seven-oh-two-one, to get the value down to thirty-eight-seven-four-three. The rural levy of six-point-eight-three-four-six-two, taxes two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, increase of about twelve dollars. Commercial property valued at a million dollars, there is a ninety percent rollback, brings the value to nine-hundred thousand, at an urban rate of three-point-eight-three-one-oh-four, taxes three-thousand-four-four-eight, a decrease of fifty-three dollars. So, in fiscal year sixteen, total property taxes, six-million-six-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. In fifteen, it was six-million-three-ninety-four-four-twenty-seven, so there's an increase, two-ninety-nine-seven-fifty-five.
Thank you, Courtney.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I appreciate you doing that. It just pulls it all into perspective very well. And it's something we started in the past, and I hope we continue it in the future. All right. We're down to committee reports. Gene, would you like to lead us off into committee reports, please?
Since we had the CADC and the regular board meeting, they went through some of their business retention and expansion, follow-up on that, talked about their, have a, if you were of the Carolina, they're having a career fair, and that will be also businesses from outside the county, as well as inside the county, and also schools from outside the county. Now, we went through our financial report, and let's see, what was the other thing? They're gonna, Rick audit, Region Twelve is gonna do a CECS update, that is a community economic development strategy. That will be taking place here. And then also, there's looking at Janet Andy, a site consultation. She's gonna come in, do a mock site visit for some of the members, so kind of have an idea. Actually, our next meeting is gonna be Jefferson, and she also gave us a report in regard to different things that's going on, and what they call leads. There was actually three of them in there. One retail, one food, one, prospects, there was two, one food, one small manufacturing and projects. There was two manufacturing, one processing, and there was one announcement, that was the FA, ACA expansion. So, they do have a lot of stuff going on there, and talked about different meetings that she had, asked her also. Then on, I'll bring you that. Then I went to the Manning, Main Street, the apartment they renovated. Very nice, very nice. It's a two-bedroom apartment. They actually even have it run out already. Then on Wednesday, I was by, it was by invitation only, with CADC that met with Senator Jordan Nurse, and she just gave her kind of a little bit of background of what's happened and how she's been doing it, and, and field of questions from the audience. And my Cherokee meeting was canceled because they had a lot of issues going on up there. All staff needed to be on deck. So, that's my meeting.
I just had a special conservation meeting on the nineteenth, basically over the South Rail Trail, which came to fruition today. I did have contact with, I got myself kind of roped into a broadband committee with ISAC, and I did email you guys that, that bill, it looked to me like it was heavy on wishes that applicants would like to have, you know, as far as locations and cell towers. And I can be brief on this. I mean, I can go into detail about some thoughts that I have, as far as what I'm gonna be actually taking to a meeting on Wednesday. The Iowa Communications Association Alliance is in favor of, of the bill. They're, they don't think it's enough money, and I don't either. But I personally think that it's gonna go to the big corporations, and they're gonna spot towers along the interstates, and that's where the money's gonna go. And so, I don't think Carroll County has anything to benefit by the bill at all. Any comments on that?
Part of the discussion was, they think the location of cell tower should be left up to the counties, and to have anybody else do that would be taking away some of our home rule authority. Is that gonna be part of this discussion as well?
Probably.
Okay.
Taxes were another issue.
Taxes, okay.
Whether they should be exempt.
One entity we did business with in Crawford County also did, got them built on their property and given to public agencies, counties to get them tax exempt, and I don't know if that was a good deal or not. I don't like that, actually. But it happened here, and it happened there.
I'll definitely be looking out for the county.
All right. Thank you, Dean.
I wouldn't think that they'd get any better deal than what wind towers would get. I mean, at the very least.
I don't, I don't think it's gonna affect Carroll County. I don't think we're gonna see anything here. I don't think there's enough money involved. I would just assume the bill never passed, and some more thought put into the dollar amount and where the money's actually gonna go. The broadband thing is a difficult thing. I mean, it's so expensive. It's, you know, the federal broadband initiative, their minimum amount of broadband wireless is twenty-five meg. Well, it's unachievable unless you spend a tremendous amount of money. So, we're not gonna get the money to do it. So, I, I guess I don't understand that part of it. So, I would just assume it, I would, I would not be in favor of the bill simply because of the fact it's not gonna do, not gonna benefit Carroll County, and it's not gonna benefit, I don't think, any of the counties. I think the only counties that are gonna benefit by it is ATMT putting towers along the interstates.
Interstate country.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dean. All right, keep us posted.
Yep, I will.
Mark?
Monday, had Carroll Area Child Care Center board meeting, and update on the repairs and the construction there is, insurance has settled on an amount of seventy-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, based on actual cash value of approximately one-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars worth of repairs. The balance of those repairs that insurance didn't cover, they're gonna apply this year's annual fundraiser to it, also the Neil Troback grant, also the Community Foundation grant, as well as, there was one other item there too. They'll probably end up taking a loan for the balance of it. We hope that to be very minimal. We've already had some discussion with one of the banks there, and so I think they're gonna go ahead and go through, but that would be approximately, roughly twenty-five thousand dollars or so is what that would be. Also, they reported on a toy drive that Carroll Broadcasting led that was very productive for them. It's the first time they've ever done it. It was, you know, very well organized. It, it was all done in one day, so it, you know, caused for quite a, you know, bit of rush just over that one time. But they'll revisit it again next year, but it was, they really got a great benefit out of it. So, they're going to plan to repaint at least two of the three remaining classrooms. There was some staff handbook changes that were addressed. And then there was a little bit of discussion about, most of you have seen, that there is a bill that has passed, the subcommittee on raising the minimum wage in Iowa, and that's one that they've gotta watch very closely because it's my understanding, none of their full-timers would be affected by that. They're all over and above that anyways. But all of your part-time high school help, it would significantly impact the budget on the childcare center, similar to what it did back in two thousand nine, when it was almost more than they could survive. So, I think the current proposal is to raise it from seven-and-a-quarter to eight-seventy-five. I believe what it is. But I don't, I think it's fairly general as far as there's not gonna be any, or very many exclusions from that whatsoever. So, that was on Monday. And then on Thursday, emergency management and E911 met. I'll just pass this around. If you want to take copies of it, you can, but there is a website. I guess I'll just start with this. This is a, the new statewide mass notification system, of which Carroll County is gonna be a part of. It's called Alert Iowa, and it's free to sign up for. I think once we get it, it's gonna be operational, most likely by the second week of March. And I think we're probably going to get with media and try and get the word out that all white-page phones are gonna be automatically enrolled. But if anybody wants to enroll their cellphone, they'll have to go to the website and do it there, or you can just print one of these forms off and turn it into Sarah, and then she'll get it updated into the system. And you can pick and choose what warnings you want to receive. If you don't think you're much of a threat for a flood warning-
Sure.
-then you don't have to receive those. And it can be done by area. You know, if a thunderstorm is moving in a certain area, you know, you could perhaps consider getting warned by a, you know, a city to your west, you know, because that's only gonna give you a ten-minute head start over your, your community. But that was part of that night. The real reason we met was for the budgets. Had public hearing for, I'll start with the E911 budget, and, of course, there's no county asking, tax asking for this one. The budget remained pretty much about the same over last year. The only difference is, is we're probably gonna have to amend last year's budget for the GEOCOM project. And then current revenues are projected. You know, there was a change in the legislature last year where there's more money from the cellphone surcharge going to the 911. And Jeff said that current revenues are exceeding about twenty-four thousand dollars per quarter. So, again, there wasn't much change in the budget from last year. So again, there wasn't much change in the budget from last year. So then moving into E911, and the county tax asking, remember, two years ago, we began to include the $21,000 hazmat part of this, because what that does is that impacts our EMPG funding, and it's to help get the match. But our current proposed county contribution of $50,094, of which $21,000 of that is included for the hazmat, and then that also includes the EMPG funding. So the net county tax asking is about $12,000, is about what that'll be. So rather minimal. Any questions on that?
I just had a comment on this, I guess. I had the National Weather Service alert me today on my cellphone. So would it just be redundant?
I can't speak to that. I don't know what service that you have. I know, you know, I think Megan has told me she's got some kind of service that she gets on her phone down in Arizona when she gets, it just tells her if there's a freeze warning or anything like that. So I think you can still sign up for anything optionally that might be out there. But in that case, it may be, you know, if it's going to certainly be one of these covered warnings.
Okay.
I'm going to make a copy of that.
Sure.
Anything else, Mark?
That's it. Sorry.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. Okay. On Thursday, had the Communities for Children, DCAT, board meeting. We went over some of the reports that our providers had for our second quarter. We had the elections. Todd from Audubon is the president, and I'm the vice president this year. We went over the LSI contract. It's Lutheran Services Iowa, where we're doing the mental health in the high schools. They are having a heck of a time getting a state licensed therapist who has a master's degree, which is what the contract is written up for. They wanted to, however, they thought they could probably find someone with a BA or a bachelor's degree. And so we did go along with letting them hire someone with that, because they've looked everywhere, and they're, they cannot find anyone. And hopefully, it'll work out. If it doesn't, we can switch back and change the contract for future years. Went over the budget for our coming year. It looked pretty good. Reviewed our mini-grants, and that was about it. A bunch of routine business other than that. Also got the, it's not a meeting I attend it, but I get a monthly date, update from the Second Judicial District. On March 4, they're going to get reviewed by the team for Department of Corrections, checking their compliance with their purchase of service contract. And then there's going to be a meeting after that going over what they have found, and that's also March 4. And that's about it for that. Some other news of less importance. I just wanted to also remind everyone that this Saturday, again, there's a legislative forum at 10 a.m., and I believe it's at Newell Activity Center.
Yes.
Okay. They kind of jockeyed around, but I think that's where it ended up.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other things? Any comments from those in attendance?
I haven't any.
Okay. Iowa would entertain a motion to adjourn otherwise?
So moved.
Okay. It's not a Babel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same say aye.
Carroll County, Internet, website?
Yes, yes. It's...
So you go Carroll County?
Yeah, under the emergency management. See the very bottom? That's the actual website.